Good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, September 2nd, and I call this a special meeting of the Board of Education to order. If Ms. Cavalero could please establish our quorum?
Yes, President Householder.
Here.
Vice President Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Present.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up, we have our flag salute. If Trustee Dr. Lewis could lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. Everyone ready? Hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next item, which is our items for information, discussion, and action by the board. So we have two items this evening. But before jumping into our discussion, I just wanted to say a few words and give the rest of the trustees a chance to speak before we hear comments and before we have our discussion. So former Secretary of State Henry Clay said in 1828, "Government is a trust and the officers of government are the trustees. Both the trust and the trustees are created for the benefit of the people." That's why we're here tonight, because the public trusts us with the most valuable thing on this planet, our children. Over the weekend, parents, students, and community members brought to my attention an incident where force was used to subdue a student. Unfortunately, this isn't the first time concerns have been risen around disciplinary practices and procedures, particularly for students of color. While tonight's meeting is not about the incident itself, it did raise questions and concerns that the board needs to discuss with the public. Specifically, we're going to be discussing two things. So the first being, what policies and procedures do we have that deal with use of force? And how do we want use of force incidents to be handled in the future? Because we are policy setters. We're not here to point fingers or blame anybody, but rather, we're here to set policy. And then the second is being how we want to be notified of things. Because bottom line, I'm of the opinion we shouldn't learn on social media. So just want to be clear from the outset. You know, I hope that we don't get into a shoulda, coulda, woulda, you know, conversation or finger pointing or anything like that, but rather, really just take a look at what our policy is and how we want to move forward as a district. And so I appreciate everybody being here, you know, on short notice. And I really am looking forward to hearing from the public and the community. And so I want to just give everybody a chance to say something because I think we're going to be strapped in for a little while to listening to public comments. So I'm going to let Trustee Dr. Lewis, if you want to say some few words. If you don't wait till comments, that's fine, too.
Well, you know, this is, I'll wait until after comments. I reserve my comment until after comments. Yeah.
Trustee Hack.
I'm tempted to wait till after the comments, but I do have a couple of thoughts. Because I think leadership is a very subtle thing, supportive and educated and whatever. Then we need to be aware of the fact that we do not want to get into personal agendas that Ellie just mentioned going forward. Unfortunately, sometimes we do that. We go in different directions. There's one of those is very positive, one is very negative. So hopefully, we can keep it neutral.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yeah, I imagine I'll have more comments to say after the public comments. But I do want to start off by saying that, you know, we have a real opportunity for leadership here to actually improve policies and school climate for our students. I think regardless of how we got to this meeting that we are here today, we have an opportunity here ahead of us to take a look at policies, take a look at how things are going, and improve them and find ways to continue to improve those. Because at the end of the day, this is about those students. This is about reducing incidents from happening in our schools. And so I think it's less, it's more important to get focused on what can we do to continue to improve and make this a helpful process for our schools rather than focus on the reasons why we're even here in the first place. So I think that that's probably most of my comments right now is that, you know, we have a real chance to do something here. And, you know, and it shouldn't take incidents to get us to this place. We need to be more proactive in our leadership, and we can't be waiting for crisis to strike before we make decisions and make policy and react to these, you know, and be preemptive in addressing incidents like this. Because that's a real failure on our part, on the district's part, on everyone's part, that we need to be making action before we get here, not after the fact. Because every time something happens to a student, I feel that deeply in my heart. And I'm sure many people in the community also feel that deeply, regardless of, you know, the reason or anything. So we have an opportunity here to help our students, which is, you know, from day one, I've said that I'm 100% here for the students and finding a way to protect them, to increase, you know, their enjoyment of school. And so let's make the most of this opportunity to be real leaders while we're here.
Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. And then Trustee Rocha. And obviously, we're going to get a chance to talk after comments, but, you know.
Well, you know, my question is to the superintendent. Did you get many calls on this, Superintendent?
I didn't receive a single call.
Okay, because I did call the Antioch High School, and I talked to administrators, not just one, but many. They didn't get the calls. What they did get was calls responding to thanking them for taking care of the incident, that they didn't go any further, that there was no more harms to children, to the students, excuse me. And that's all my remarks, and I'll wait until later.
Wonderful. All right, and so first up, Item A, district-wide use of force policies and procedures. So let's go to public comment. I don't think it needs to be segmented by the public or by staff. So I see Ms. Bettencourt is on the line. So I'm guessing she's probably going to be taking a lead for us.
Yes. We have pages and pages of comments. So as I shared earlier, I may need to take a break in between. I do have a little bit of a cold. So if my voice starts to run dry, I'll let you guys know. And either Kelly will step in, or I'll just take a quick break. We'll go ahead and get started.
Perfect, thank you.
Staff name not provided. "Good evening, members of the board. I'm a teacher at Antioch High School. I want to express my concern over the lack of professionalism our AUSD Board President Ellie Householder has shown over the past 72 hours. Without knowing circumstances of the incident at Antioch High School last Friday, Ms. Householder decided she would take it upon herself to repost a video sent to her on her social media accounts. Without gaining any kind of information or taking the time to come out to our campus to speak with the students and staff, she decided to act just like a high schooler herself. She was quick to spread the hysteria of concern, didn't care to speak to any adults present, and hid behind her phone. She then created the second post, making the public aware of the school board meeting. She thought it was far more important to post this to her TikTok instead of making sure that it went up on the actual school site. On her TikTok, you can gain access to public comments, but her Facebook event that she created for the board meeting led to nowhere. You couldn't find the link to the comments and couldn't find the link to the meeting because it wasn't on the website yet. How incredibly misleading of you, Ms. Householder. It was very obvious that you wanted a very select group of people watching this meeting, leaving out staff members who were present. Teachers and staff could not find this meeting at all up until this moment while I'm writing this comment. Shame on you. This meeting is very important, and I understand there are a lot of hurt people involved in this incident. But instead of acting like a professional and being an example for students, you acted like an immature child. Your actions show how our students, that they, your actions show our students that they don't need to come to staff to talk about how they are feeling or to voice their concerns. You just taught them it's more important to hide behind their phones and not trust the ones who teach them on a daily basis. Your 10-person view TikTok with 18 followers will not make the difference. Do better." Michael Sagehorn, staff. "What's missing from the video are all the behavior and violence this young man was perpetuating on his fellow students and site safety staff. He is only shown being restrained after failing to follow directions to cease being violent. From my vantage point, both the safety contractor and the police department showed professional judgment and restraint techniques. This young man's life was never at risk. The only casualty was his dignity after creating a dangerous situation for him, his fellow students, and school staff. With my prior professional background, I have been frequently tasked and asked by my administrative leaders to assist in restraining students who were endangering others. Sometimes it only takes sincere language appealing to students' better nature, but there are times when pressure and leverage against limbs are required. It's risky to school staff, but regrettably necessary. Ms. Householder, unless you have been in this position as a teacher and administrator, your public comments are irresponsible and suggest you have a larger ax to grind with our skilled, certified, management, classified, and contract personnel. I cannot fathom your intentions nor your motives." John Paster, community member. "Obviously, you speak before thinking, or in this case, before commenting. Why stir the pot before you have all of the facts, except to continue the rhetoric and hate you are so good at? Please do our kids a favor and resign before you can do more damage. We support Stephanie Anello. We all know that you will spin it so that the student did no wrong and everyone else is." Jamie Rackley, community member. "Ellie Householder, as an official, you owe it to your constituents to get all of the facts prior to making false assumptions and calling an emergency meeting that wastes time and money. You not only posted a partial video that did not show the violence and out-of-control rage that led up to the young man being detained, but on top of that, you made an ignorant assumption and comment trying to add an element of race to this already sad situation. That is absolutely disgusting. I want to thank the staff, security, and police for their actions that led to ending his violent attack and keeping my daughter, who was in his vicinity, safe. Please know you are appreciated. Ignore idiots like Ellie, please." Name not provided, community member. "Dr. Clyde Lewis, pastime for you to step up and lead. Ellie Householder is not equipped to lead. She gives no regard to the many students that she has violated by posting this video. Enough is enough, and the citizens of Antioch are beyond exhausted with her. And for God's sake, please inform Ellie that to lead, you truly must learn how to follow. Our children and the site staff deserve better representation than what she has exhibited. #EllieResign." Allison Pantel, community member. "The schools are out of control, and there is definitely reason that these kids were held down this way. They obviously weren't making good choices and were not listening to multiple personnel. Thank God we have security like this at this school. I am thankful the police officer showed up when they did. This was a choice, authorities made to keep our children safe. Thank you, Antioch Police Department, and thank you, Antioch Security Officers, and thank you, Antioch High School. Our schools need security, and our children need protection." Heather L., community member. "What happened to the school resource officers? How come we have mall cops securing our children? What did you expect? Also play stupid games and win stupid prizes, and the city council played stupid games, and this child won a stupid prize. City Council sets no example for Antioch members as some are either being investigated for criminal activities and/or has a criminal background, and which said person, kids, person's kids are right behind them, speeding along with their dirt bikes and quads, looking for three hots in a cot. You guys took away what should have been our children's help and resources for times like these, but instead, we now have people who also patrol parking lots and malls patrolling our kids. If I was APD and got a call from the schools, I'd tell them to call you guys, since nothing they do is good enough for you guys." Name not provided, staff. "This comment is for Dr. Lewis. We, the teachers, are tired of you talking out both sides of your mouth. You take the easy out on all decisions, yet Ellie always says she has collaborated with you. This meeting is a joke, and you are part of the chaotic storm Ellie tries to bring to AUSD. As a parent to AUSD students, we hoped you would rise up and not let your desire to climb the political ladder get in the way of being a responsible board member. This special meeting is a waste of the public's time and you and Ellie's efforts to give our district a black eye. We see you, Lewis, we see you. We expected more, and you are failing all of us." Concerned parent, community member. "Here we go again. Our board president going off, jumping to conclusions, and trying to further her political career on the backs of our children. Why are you so quick to have a meeting on this issue that you know nothing about? You post a video on your TikTok account, very grown-up of you, showing a 20-second period of time in slow motion to make it seem longer, where the situation is at its end, and then you, and then assume you know the whole situation. The student posed a danger to the staff and students at AHS. AHS staff and site safety should be commended, not ridiculed and shamed. I, for one, am very happy that the situation was handled quickly and properly. Ellie, it is time for you to go. How much longer are we going to let this little girl run our district into the ground? It's time for a recall. Recall, Householder, now."
Ms. Bettencourt?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm having a very difficult time. The last couple of comments had nothing to do with policies and procedures. So if it's a general comment, and we do not have general comments on the docket this evening, so I just ask that when we're going through these comments, if it's not related to the topic, we're going to have to not read it because it needs to be related to the topic.
I need to ask direction regarding that.
So that's going to be hard at this point because what we did is we included every single one of them. And there's plenty of negative ones about me coming up. So you can see that we didn't pick and choose our comments. It just, things were tertiaryly related. And I don't know, we could take a 10-minute break and go through it. I can go through it with Ms. Bettencourt.
Yeah, please do.
It will likely take more than 10 minutes. There is 60 pages of comments.
So we need a motion for that.
Madam Chair, are we talking about either referring to the incident or they're just referring to you? Which is it?
No, the topic. The topic, which is policies and procedures of use of force. And so we're just.
It was concerning the incident that happened. So isn't that the force, procedures enforcement tied together? I mean, I'm just saying, it's policies and procedures. You're talking about the district-wide and the notification of the use of force. So it seems to tie into the incident. So that's what I'm having a difficulty in trying to figure out how you do separate it. I gather, and I agree, if it's on you personally as an individual, that's different.
I like to err on the side of reading all the comments. However, we are getting into very dangerous territory with talking about this student in particular. And people can say whatever they want about me, that's fine. But it's starting to concern me how much is about this student. And so, you know, we're talking about use of force from a policy perspective, from a policy perspective.
There's no name attached to it, and it only refers to the incident, which happens to be a student.
What?
I tend to agree with Mary. We've started this. Need to go further with it.
Excuse me, Trustee Hack. Where does it say an incident on this agenda? It says district-wide use of force policies and procedures.
I would respond that it is because of what took place that we are proceeding to go forward on this because you called it an emergency meeting.
I understand, I understand. But we're looking, the agenda item at hand, these comments, I'm not saying that people can't put in public comments, but we do not, on our agenda, have a public comment section. And so I'm not going to sit here and listen to people bash a student when that has nothing to do with the district-wide use of force policies and procedures. And so these comments, if, you know, if we want, it just doesn't apply. I mean, I don't know what else you want me to tell you guys.
Well, I'm hearing more of, I'm hearing more of the comments towards you, not so much as the incident or the student.
Trustee Rocha, with respect, this is about district-wide use of force policies and procedures. So why don't we take a quick 10, go through some of those comments? And then I would just ask that while Ms. Bettencourt continues to read, just scan. If one makes it in that doesn't have to do with the title, that's totally fine. But I'm not going to, if we can, try to just scan through some of these and just see what's actually relevant to what we're talking about tonight. Really appreciate it.
I'll make the motion to recess for a while to scan through the comments for any that seem unnecessary.
As the reader, I am not comfortable determining what is appropriate to be read and not. It's way out of my bounds, guys.
So Amy, why don't you and I get on a conference call? And we will go through them. It might take some time.
Yep.
Because I haven't read them all. But so we will, what's the best way to do this? I'll go through Kelly, and she can set up maybe a group email or text, or we can jump back on.
So a motion was made by Trustee Hernandez. I'll second that. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll to take a break at 6:22? We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and then let's reconvene, and we'll just go from there.
It might be more than 10 minutes. Just, just want to say, sorry.
Ms. Cavalero?
Okay, Trustee Hack.
I would prefer to continue reading the letters as they exist at this moment in time.
So I believe the motion is to take a break. It sounds like you are against taking a break to review the comments.
I'm against that break, yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
No.
The motion to take a recess to review comments passes 3 to 2 with Trustee Rocha and Trustee Hack voting against.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalero. All right, let's return at like 6:35 and touch base then. Thank you, Ms. Cavalero. All right, let's return at like 6:35 and touch base then. So if Ms. Cavalero could re-establish our quorum, just for folks who are tuning in right now at 6:43, we had gotten back from our break, had a little bit of discussion, realized we weren't live, so we are now live, so hello again. And we are going to have Ms. Cavalero re-establish our quorum from our break. Ms. Cavalero, are you on the line? Okay, not hearing her, so I will go around. Trustee Hack.
I'm here on the direct.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Uh, here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
And then, I'm here, President Householder. So we have our quorum again, and like I said, sorry for a little bit of a technical snafu there. We have staff right now currently going through comments. It looks like, according to our last report, the first 40 comments were not relevant to the topic, or it was only tertiaryly or slightly connected, did not make mention of district-wide use of force policies and procedures. So in an effort not to waste the public's time or the time of this board, I just wanted to move forward with the conversation, and then if there are any public comments that come in that are determined to be relevant or pertinent to the topic, then we will begin reading those, but we wanted to give staff a little bit more time to sift through those. And so with that, the first item that we are discussing is district-wide use of force policies and procedures. So I said this from the offset, uh, you know, really there's kind of two main questions here. Do we have a use of force policy and procedure, and if we don't, do we want one? And I guess kind of related to do we want one, what do we want that to look like? And so, um, so yeah, I'm not sure. Uh, I was told before this meeting that there wasn't going to be a staff report created for this, so I'm not sure if we have a policy or procedure dealing with use of force. When I looked through our board policies, I didn't find anything. Um, I don't know if folks have other thoughts or questions, or I don't know if our superintendent or anybody from... Yeah, Trustee Hernandez?
I'm happy to kick off this discussion, because I received a lot of emails and a lot of calls, and you know, messages on Facebook, Instagram. Uh, you know, I make myself as available to a lot of the community, um, and then they use all the different forms of technology to make sure they're able to reach out to me. Um, and then they were very, you know, under, you know, they were very angry about the incident that has inspired this conversation that we're having. So I'm a little surprised that, uh, Trustee Rocha and Superintendent Nello didn't receive a single, uh, comment about this, and I'm wondering where the breaches maybe could be there in communication, because I've received a lot, so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what maybe led to that. But to kind of kick off our conversation, I think this is, you know, a great opportunity for us to make sure that, uh, we're looking at our policies, that we're doing what we can for our students. Uh, you know, incidents like that happen all the time, but we got to make sure we're doing this in the best way possible. There's ways to have, there's a million and a half different ways to have resolved that conversation, and not all of them ended in that same way. I think sometimes we tend to make it binary in terms of was it resolved or not, but there's a lot of different ways of doing that. And especially when I get a lot of questions from the public about like, why do we do that? When do we do that? When do we call police? When do we, you know, when can we put our hands on a child? I don't have clear answers to that, because I haven't seen anything in our policy so far that give clear answers to that. So I think this is a chance right now for us, uh, to really talk about some of those pieces, provide some direction, and get those answers clearly, because once we have those things in policy, it creates a very clear way for us to have a communi-, to have communication with the public, uh, and to answer those questions, and to not kind of have to answer incident by incident, but we have a general guideline to kind of guide us through these things.
Uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Uh, so, so I want to, so I reserve my, my comments, and I was going to reserve all the way until the end of the comments, uh, but you know, it seems like we're coming back. Um, so I, I have a question for everybody. Is everybody familiar with the wor-, with, uh, vicarious trauma? Vicarious trauma is sort of that trauma that you experience over and over again as a result of experiencing something, uh, that you've experienced before. So personally, when that video came out, I didn't respond, I'm not, I'm not the, you know, respond person, that's just not who I am. I'm not a, a quick to respond person, but personally, I've experienced something like that. And when I saw the video, regardless of what happened, I put myself in that student's position. Um, so, I don't, I don't, I, 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 I can't even really put it into words, and I'm, you know, people that know me would probably be surprised by that, but having gone through something like that, it's similar to, well, I don't want to give an example, because I don't want to be, I don't want that to be taken out of context, but having gone through a, a similar experience, it's imperative that we understand what happened, of course, but we also want to make sure that we are putting things in place to prevent things like that from happening in the future. I'm not saying we place blame, I'm not saying we do anything like that. What I'm saying is, it's similar to a situation, if you've gone through something traumatic, you see that and, and you see that played out in front of you, there's a visceral response to it. There's an immediate, now, I, you know, I don't post, I don't, you know, and people ask me about why I didn't post and why I didn't respond, that's just not who I am. I don't do that. But having gone through something like that, uh, you know, having a gun, and if my response is, in the situation that I was personally in, a gun was put to my head by somebody in a position of authority. And if you haven't gone through that, you know, I, I, I would question, you know, your, your questioning of me. So I, I, you know, I reserve my comments, you know, from there. So again, this is a very emotional thing for me, so.
Thank you for sharing, Dr. Lewis. Um, Superintendent Nello?
Yeah, so I just want to be very careful. I did, while we took a break, I called, uh, one of our attorneys, who was very concerned that we were limiting public comment, especially because, uh, the conversation right now is about the incident. Right? Both of you have mentioned the incident, so, um, if it's, if this is not about the incident, then we should probably not talk about it, but I did invite him to join us, um, to give his perspective on the public comments.
And you know what? If, 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 if it, if it pleases everyone, let's, let's actually read the comments, because I'd be curious to see from those comments, uh, you know, the people that have experienced something like this, if that's the conversation that's going to happen. Um, and, yeah, so, yeah.
Uh, Superintendent Nello, when you said join, do you mean like on our call, right on this, uh, WebEx call, or like via, okay?
Yeah, yes, advise us, I think, and I, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Dr. Lewis, I'm, I'm so sorry for whatever you went through.
Do we have an estimate of when he'll come on?
I told him 20 minutes, um, because I think I caught him in the middle of dinner, quite frankly. So, um, it's probably about 15 minutes from here, 10 minutes from here. Uh, because, uh, Ms. Beckcourt and I started going through the comments, and I was very uncomfortable thinking, um, about that relationship of the incident to, which was the impetus for this conversation, which I think is, um...
Yeah, and I think that, and I don't, I don't want there to be a, um, interpretation... Yeah. And I think that, and I don't, I don't want there to be a, um, interpretation that I, or, uh, give the impression rather that there, you know, that it can't mention anything about anything, you know, just that it has to be related to what we're talking about, which is use of force. Um, and if a, yeah. So why don't we just go ahead and read the comments and then we'll have our, um, attorneys going to be on here and like, uh, soon. And so let's just do it.
Ms. Bettencourt, are you still there?
Yeah, I was trying to go back to where I left off. If you can give me a couple of seconds, we're sorting through.
If we're going to read the comments, perhaps we don't need him to be on the call unless, are you comfortable with that? Okay.
Nodding heads. I, I'm nodding my head. I, I had not the full screen, nodding head, nodding head. Okay.
Yeah, we're good with that. Send him a text. Thank you.
Okay. So I believe my direction is I'm going to read all of the comments and I'm going to start from where I left off. Name not provided staff. Why I don't know the details surrounding this footage quoted from Ellie Householder's Facebook post of the AHS video. I have been an educator for more than twenty years. In all of my years, I have never seen more inappropriate, unprofessional and inciderary actions taken by a school board member, let alone its president. You can stop pretending that you want to work alongside this staff. You chastise our test scores and strip our schools of librarians. You revoke SROs on campus and without any context whatsoever, cry overreach and abuse over a video you admit you don't know the details of. You should be ashamed of yourself for pretending that you are fighting for it with anyone other than yourself, Ellie. Name not provided staff. President Householder and Vice President Lewis, you need to hear us speak. We, the teachers, are tired of your games and trying to make us look like we don't care about the students in AUSD. It's bad enough we have to sit through your items around homeless people on campus and such, but to take an incident on one of our campuses that was handled appropriately and paint it to be the abuse of power and excessive force is appalling and deplorable. Stop making our district and our students the platform for you to discuss your political views and opinions. No one cares. What we do care about is safe schools and that support are in place to protect staff and students. Eight twenty-seven at AHS was testimony to the reality that AUSD works hard to provide safety to all. You two clowns have made this about you. How dare you? Step down. You have lost all of our faith and confidence. Name not provided community member. I find it very suspicious that the East County Today and the Herald seem to always release things whenever the board president brings up an issue with the board. The superintendent is obviously connected to all of these friends and the timing can't always be a coincidence. Starting conversations about controversial and yet very real subjects should not be punished. Name not provided staff. President Householder posted a video of an incident at AHS with no working knowledge of the situation to her TikTok account. Is she not required to respect student privacy? Does FERPA not apply to her? What about the investigative process? Does she get to rush to judgment without knowing a single fact? Her behavior is egregious and dangerous. Someone needs to stop this madness and remove her from the board. She's worse than someone screaming fire in a theater. Name not provided. Superintendent Anello tends to get very emotional about her students in public forums. And yet to me, it seems like the image of a young man of color being forcefully subdued should be the thing that draws outrage from the people in positions of power. Name not provided. I support President Householder's willingness to immediately talk about how to deal with these sorts of deplorable situations. That young man, regardless of his offense, should have never been pinned to the ground by his hair. And I took, and I look forward to seeing what the board will do about this. Name not provided. Why is it that the superintendent always works with her friends in the press to conveniently release articles right before public meetings? I would love to just focus on the issue and not all this noise that is generated about it. Please be transparent. Antioch resident, community member. Why do we allow our corrupt board president and our corrupt city council continue to make our town into some kind of episode of Jerry Springer? So you have a problem with our students being safe. Would Ellie and Mayor Thorpe make an issue of this if the student was white and the security officer black? Answer, no. Hashtag disgraceful. Name not provided. I wish the superintendent would show less tears and more action towards this kind of behavior. That young man should have never been subdued in that manner. I do not care what the offense was or what the investigation is trying to uncover. This was just plain wrong. Daryl Stinson. That video was a horrible thing to witness. I support Ellie Householder in being transparent and facing the issue head on. As a city, we can do better for our children. Name not provided staff. Ellie and Clyde need to go. You conspire on ways to attack the superintendent, which is an attack on all of us. You work hard to race bait and cause community outrage and frustration. We are all just very lucky that neither of you are very effective at it. Step down and take your drama somewhere else. You are not helpful nor heartfelt and everyone sees through you. Seriously, what is your goal? Because from a teacher's viewpoint, it appears your primary goal is to cause damage. Name not provided, community member. As a parent of a student at Antioch High School, whose student was impacted, this situation, I would like to thank Principal Rocha, the AHS teachers and all other staff on campus that day for handling the incredibly dangerous and fragile situation with care and an abundance of caution. I am also calling for Ms. Householder's resignation as she has posted my child on her social media account. And I did not give her permission to do so. Who do you think you are? You should know that you need to protect students' rights to privacy at a minimum and you are a failure. Step down. You are an awful example to our students. I will be seeking legal action against President Householder for her negligent act of posting a video on her social media of my child. Although he was a bystander, I do not appreciate him being all over social media as the result of the president's action. What is wrong with you? Please do the right thing and resign. If not now, we resign once the investigation against you and specific city officials is complete. Hashtag get out now. Name not provided staff. As a teacher, I would like to thank the school district, site administration and STM for keeping our campuses and our students safe. Ellie and Clyde, go away as you only do harm. You are everything we don't need in AUSD. Nicole S. Community member. I am absolutely appalled that Householder has wasted everybody's time and resources to call this unnecessary meeting. She is the biggest pot stirrer I've ever seen. The second she gets wind of a black kid in trouble with the police, she runs to social media. I'm willing to bet this meeting wouldn't be happening if the kid in the video was white. The school did nothing wrong here. It is their job to protect the innocent students from the students that's threatening harm, no matter the color of the student's skin. This is common sense. I know most people on the Antioch School Board and City Council have lost all their common sense. It would have been nice to have those SROs on campus for this situation, when in it. Maria N. Community member. I have never commented at a board member meeting before because I usually feel that it will fall on deaf ears, but I am compelled to say something now because enough is enough. For the board president to post the snip it of a video on her Facebook page and on TikTok is outrageous. Her, her concern is for the boy being restrained and his rights, but what about the rights of my children? My son was right there when this occurred and what the short clip doesn't show you is just how out of control the boy was that led him to need to be restrained. My son was genuinely afraid for his own safety and the safety of the student and staff the boy attacked. Ms. Householder, how far does an out of control student need to get? And how many people does he need to hurt before you will admit that sometimes restraining someone is the best for all included, including the restrained student? It is frightening to think of how far this situation could have gone if staff hadn't stopped him when they did. What if your child or your brother or your nephew or even the boy was trying to harm? Or you, the boy was trying to harm? And who are you to judge that the actions were inappropriate based on a short outtake? Did you see the whole video? Either someone is manipulating, manipulating you by only showing you a portion of what happened, or you are inflaming the situation by only providing the portion that you think portrays you as being a hero by bringing this light, this to light while it backfired. All this proves is that you will manipulate any situation for your own benefit. Shame, shame, shame. Name not provided, community member. As a spouse of an AUSD employee, I watch my wife work ten to twelve hour days and come home exhausted every single day since the pandemic set in. However, even though she's exhausted, she is proud of her work and those she works with because the entire AUSD staff puts students first every single day and will do whatever it takes to make sure they have what they need. To see President Householder and VP Lewis call a special board meeting for an incident that was handled and is under investigation and cause those who already work twelve hour days to work longer and harder to respond to their demands is disgusting. Trustee Hernandez, trustee Rocha and trustee Hack step up and help move this board in the right direction. Stop letting, letting them cause havoc for no reason. Force them to be better or force them to step down. Name not provided staff. As a veteran teacher here in AUSD, I am appalled by the nonstop bullying of our superintendent and staff by the three new clowns on the board. You are jokes to the public and your endless need to talk about yourselves is unbelievable. No one cares, guys. No one cares, guys. Stop your harassment. Stop being self-absorbed and obnoxious and get focused on learning your role as a board member or get out. We are all sick of the Three Musketeers. And yes, everyone calls you that. Board meeting brag fest. If nothing else, do the public a favor and stop saying how smart you all are. Your actions have yet to demonstrate any bit of intelligence, which is obvious by the calling of this special meeting tonight. Bob Carson, staff. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Anello. The events that occurred at Antioch High on Friday, eight twenty-seven, should be thoroughly investigated. I can't imagine there is anyone in this school district that doesn't agree with the need for this to happen. It has been my experience that conducting a fair and detailed investigation can often take a little time. For the life of me, I don't understand why Superintendent Anello and her staff haven't been given the time they need to make this happen. Instead, we have a hastily called special board meeting that now can't even address the specific issues the board president calling the meeting for in the first place. This ill-advised meeting is another embarrassing chapter for the AUSD school board under its current leadership. Jamming a school board meeting down the throats of our community before the facts are clear seems reckless to me, especially if it violates board policy. I have confidence in Superintendent Anello's ability to get to the bottom of what happened. I know she will share the truth with all of us, regardless of what conclusions are reached. Let Superintendent Anello do the job she was hired to do. Sincerely, Bob Carson, AUSD teacher. Jake Van Dyke, community member. First and foremost, please let me say that I am not in favor of calling a special meeting to investigate the matter that took place on the campus of Antioch High School this last week. I am also not in favor of this board completing an investigation or even discussing the matter until a proper investigation has been completed. I would also urge you to have a third party investigate this matter and have them bring their findings to the board to then discuss this matter. I can't say for sure, but it seems that the board president is trying to jump to conclusions before the proper steps have been taken. I am sure most people listening to this meeting also know that Ellie has already made her point of view clear by posting a backward social media post saying, and I quote, "While I don't know the details surrounding this footage, historically, we know that disciplinary practices have been unfairly applied to black male students." Ellie, you said it yourself, you don't know the details and you are now bringing race into a situation that may not even have merit. Yes, the student was a black male, but you don't know what he did. What if he was a different race and you found out that he was threatening students and himself with possibly, possible bodily injury? Would it then be okay that they took this force against him? No, you bring race into a situation to further separate race in the community. You should not be bringing race into a situation unless you have proof that someone was treated a certain way because of his race. No student should have excessive force used against him if it is unwarranted. And for you to again bring race into a matter that you don't know the details of just shows me that you are not trying to bring the community together. It shows me that you are trying to pit races against each other rather than trying to bring us together and deal with the matter at hand. Was this use of force necessary on any student? Please let the experts do their job. Let someone properly investigate the situation and bring their findings to the board before you pass judgment. Name not provided staff. As a high school teacher in this district, one thing I teach my students is that just because you disagree with someone's viewpoint, it doesn't make them wrong and you're right. The same goes for politics. I might not always agree with the things individual board members say, but I respect their right to say it. Disagreement doesn't make anyone right or wrong. It just means you disagree. I really hope that tonight's conversation doesn't get caught up in bickering about what any specific member can and cannot do. The great thing about democracy is a system of checks and balances. With that in mind, I hope you all focus on the topics themselves rather than the finger pointing. Respect the process, focus on developing a good policy. How are we supposed to trust the system if you don't? Mark, staff. Ellie, I really can't thank you enough for putting this item on the agenda as it gives me the opportunity to thank everyone, including the, including the principal Rocha, STM staff, AHS, AHS staff and the Antioch Police Department for their efforts to restrain and secure a young man who was clearly out of control before he could do, cause more harm to himself or others. If the incident had been allowed to go on, things could have been, could have ended up even worse with more injuries, both mental and physical to those involved as well as other innocent bystanders. When I look at the video, I see plenty of staff monitoring the situation and the student who was being restrained, including Principal Rocha. Great job, Principal Rocha, STM, AHS staff and APD for handling a very dangerous situation so well. Holden McGroin, community member. Let's face it, a good portion of parents residing in Antioch lack the gumption to discipline their children. From a young age, the parents refuse to enforce any type of punishment for their little tiny spawns of Satan. As a result, the kids grow pest, pestilent and instead of reconciling their faults, they enact demonic behavior such as spewing vitralic insults, leaving empty cartons of milk in the fridge and hiding the remote during Shark Week. The role of the bad guy has been abandoned and needs to be upheld by school faculty now. My teachers used to beat the living crap out of me and you know what? I'm glad they did. And when I got my MBA in education, I'll be looking forward to beating the crap out of them too. Nothing too crazy, just a quick elbow jab to the larynx or left hook to the, uh, dendium will do the trick nicely, but I digress. So I might limp around like a constipated penguin and dribble tiny beads of saliva while I smile, but I wouldn't be the man I am today if it wasn't for the stern consequences doled out from my elementary and middle school teachers. And for that, I am eternally grateful. Amy Udi, community member. As a community member, a parent of students at three different campuses in the district, including one at Antioch High and a district staff member, I feel that the situation on eight twenty-seven at Antioch High School was handled professionally and the safest way possible for everyone involved. When a student is making threats of physical harm against anyone on campus, the staff has a duty to protect everyone on that campus from harm. And sometimes that means involving the police. The fact that this incident was able to be handled quickly and that no students or staff members were harmed by the individual making threats is proof that the policy in place is not only appropriate, but also effective. I am grateful to the AHS staff and the Antioch Police for ensuring the safety and well-being of everyone involved and feel they should be commended for a job well done. Rebecca Hernandez, community member. Board of trustees, once again, it has been brought to our attention that Ellie Householder has spoken without getting all her facts straight. There is another example of her incompetence. She does not have the best interest of all the kids in AUSD, but only cares about her agenda. Ellie Householder, it is time for you to resign. Donna, community member. Ellie Householder, your incompetence has been shown too many times. It is time for your resignation. Jacob Wright, community member. I can't believe Householder is such a negative and divisive official. My son went to school with her and told me she was a bully. When someone challenged her, she was the first to run to a teacher, the office and tattle on them pretending to be a victim. Here we are again, only she has some power that's gone to her head. Kelly Rayburn, community member. I would first like to thank board president Ellie Householder for always bringing up important issues that are happening in our schools. There are people out there attacking Householder on social media anytime a cop issue is brought up. All she wants is an investigation. Yes, that student might, might have been attacking out, but the video shows an officer pinning his dreads down. How is that okay or any means? They could have seriously hurt him or killed him. Didn't we just get over a similar issue like this and someone died? Think about that, people. Why does this, why did his hair need to be pulled that hard? Three people couldn't handle it, so you guys had to pin his head down with his dreads? You guys ought to be ashamed of yourselves. You guys care more about adult police than our students. Name not provided, community member. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I am the parent of a student at Antioch High School. Last Friday, I picked up my daughter at school. She shared that at lunch, another student refused to listen to the adults. She also shared that she was thankful to see Antioch High staff try to talk to the student for over ten minutes because it showed they wanted to care. Unfortunately, this child would not comply and seemed to want a confrontation. He tried to hit and bite staff and other students. An officer tried to talk to him and he tried to attack her. She took him to the ground in a calm manner that didn't hurt him. However, he continued to try to hurt her. Other officers arrived and pled with him to go to the office. He tried to fight them. I want to thank everyone who are now being criticized because she got in my car to tell me this story. Name not provided, community member. Kind of suspicious the timing of the articles about the board president, I must say. Seem like there's a conflict of interest going on between the superintendent, Antioch Herald and East County Today and the police department. She's, since she's married to an officer and making two hundred and fifty K a year. Way overpaid if you ask me. She's not to be trusted. People are most, more focused on attacking Householder over, other than focusing on the actual subject, which is police force on students. We need to talk about the details of that video. Good evening. Name not provided staff. Good evening. Good evening, board members and superintendent Anello. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the incident at AHS. First and foremost, Ellie, not only do you owe AHS a formal apology, but you owe the whole staff, site safety, STM, and Mr. Rocha an apology for your irrational behavior, what you posted on your social media. Not only did you jump to conclusions, but you tried to cause more divide between students, staff, security, and the police department. You had zero facts before posting. Let's start off by asking, did you go to school and get a signed release form for all the students whose faces were shown? You definitely didn't since you posted that video on a Saturday evening. As a school board president, you should know that's against any policy and all parents are to decide and sign papers whether or not it's okay for them to be shown every school year. Violation at its finest. Also, if this student wasn't resisting being detained and/or arrested by APD, why did he swing and strike an AHS site safety in the back of the head, kick and injure one of the STM employees, and also try to bite an STM employee? Could it be because he was resisting and because he thought he was Count Dracula with the grill in his mouth that had fanged teeth? Fact check that, promise you'll lose. Also, the accusations about it being an AHS site safety employee that was restraining this student is absurd. If you actually look, that is two STM employees and APD whom are both trained to do so and it was done properly. By your track record, I'm suggesting a no competence vote that you step down and resign from the AUSD school board. Candace, community member. If a kid needs to be restrained, that's fine to a certain extent, but a grown man coming in to assist by pinning his dreadlocks down to the ground? How is that okay? I would be livid if that was my son. I guarantee that if there was a qualified mental health counselor and better de-escalation tactics, we wouldn't be sitting here today talking about this. What a shame. My kids will not be going to Antioch High School if Rocha is still the principal. Tom Thornton, community member. Why is Householder a school board president calling meetings on her own? Does she have the authorization to do that without the school board majority? On social media, board member Lewis said he heard about the meeting after Householder called the meeting. I heard on a podcast that Lewis was not even consulted prior to the meeting. My only question is, why didn't Mr. Lewis set the record straight during this email exchange between staff and Householder? Lisa Williams, community member. Isn't East County Today paid by Antioch Unified to write articles? Mike Burkholder seems counterintuitive that he constantly writes misinformation about the school board president, especially when this is an important subject about investigating police and their use of force on students. And may I add, he's a really good family friend of Stephanie Anello, and so is Alan Payton. They have lunch and dinner together. This is so weird, you guys. Jose Travers, community member. So let me get this straight. This kid assaults another kid, staff, and fights against the police. Householder reposts her BFF's video of the incident and has no idea what happened prior? Householder talks about staff, police, and security staff pulling his hair when he is trying to bite people with a grill with fangs in his mouth. Using hair to move his to move this kid's head away from biting people is completely right if it stops people from further attack. Why is Householder opening up the district to lawsuits when everyone did their best to control an out of control kid? Also, why doesn't the school board allow an investigation to be done if there was any wrongdoing on anyone's part? It seems like Householder is grandstanding again. Back, Rocha Hernandez or Lewis should take over the role of board president. Michael Finn, community member. I saw the video of this student who apparently was out of control. The video shows very little, but by all accounts, this kid hit staff and security. What I did note was the restraint used by school staff. Principal Rocha, I am happy you are there. The amount of unruly kids is disturbing. Name not provided, staff. Hello, Ms. Householder, I am a current employee and graduate of AUSD. Mr. Rocha was my vice principal, and now he is my boss. The staff at Antioch High care deeply about the students and their safety. Please consider sitting down and talking with the staff before assuming they have bad intentions. Our security staff is especially great, and many of them are also former students of Antioch High School. We come back because we know that the staff and Mr. Rocha care about the students and are dedicated to having a welcoming and safe environment for learning. AHS has almost 2,000 students enrolled, and we do our best to address any problems that we hear about as soon as we hear about them. Mr. Cartwright, one of our fabulous vice principals, held a town hall meeting for all students on Wednesday so that students could express all opinions and concerns about security on our campus. We also have a great peer advocate group, and its purpose is conflict management. There are many nuances to managing conflict in this modern world, and I would appreciate that you, Ms. Householder, as our leader, would appreciate that and come to the campus personally to ask questions before creating a sensational post that understandably upsets the public. We advise the students to not jump to conclusions after seeing a post or reading something on social media. I encourage you to do the same. Thank you. Alyssa McDonald, community member. How does a special meeting about a student and investigation with police get twisted around and flipped on Householder? That's crazy to me. There's too many ties between Stephanie Anello and those blog sites and these blog sites. Antioch Herald and East County Today always flip things around and attack Householder. Let's talk about the subject, not have petty drama feuds. Grow up, Stephanie. Stop running to your friends to constantly bash her. This is why a lot of the community of Antioch hate you. Not dislike you, we actually hate you. It's like you get paid 250,000 a year to tell your puppets to write misleading information on your boss. Householder actually cares about the students, you don't, especially not the colored ones. Name not provided, community member. How is it the board president can justify making condescending comments to the media regarding the manner in which this was handled by the district when she never contacted the superintendent for details of the incident? She also noted once again, black male students were being targeted. She continues to place herself in the middle of situations and judge for her own political gain. Get the facts before you place judgment. She needs to step down. She's not helping Antioch grow and certainly not helping Antioch students. George and Michelle, community members. Thank you, school board president, for always having the courage and strength to talk about problems throughout the district. I know the community will appreciate the answers we hopefully get today on what the protocol is when using force on students. When I watched the video, it made me sick to my stomach seeing that young man being held down by his dreadlocks. That's insane. Holding his head down by his hair was sickening. He could have seriously been injured. Holding down his dreads wasn't making a difference. If those other officers needed help, he could have helped by holding his body down, not his freaking head. I hope anyone who doesn't agree gets fired. Name not provided, community member. Discipline in the schools needs to be reviewed and redone. In the elementary school level, children are being forced to pick up trash for minor occurrences. I do believe they are not given gloves. Also, student monitors are playing on their phones during recess instead of monitoring children. Name not provided, staff. I am writing in regards to the incident that occurred at AHS. Ellie, I have sat back and given you the benefit of the doubt, knowing that being a board member, president, will have a learning curve, but you have exhausted my patience. Your inability to lead has made this district a laughing stock, and I'm tired of it. You have called this meeting to deflect your own mistakes that you have made with regards to this incident, not to mention all the other mistakes since you have taken office. You have criticized AHS security, STM, AHS admin, and staff as to how they handle the situation with an out of control student. While not only were you not there, but you jumped the gun before you even knew the facts or knew the history of the students involved. Are you telling us that if an active shooter is on campus, that he, she should not be detained or held to the ground until APD is on scene to control the situation? There's no difference between the two scenarios. Ellie, you cannot have it both ways, and with your inability to lead, I ask for a no competence vote, and I ask you to step down in order to avoid any further embarrassment to this district and the city of Antioch. Leslie Scudero, staff. Good evening, superintendent Anello and board. Unlike some board members, I do not intend to judge or criticize a situation that I do not have all the facts on. I will, however, strongly recommend that board members who are questioning the intent and role of security take a couple of days to spend with them on campus. I'm out and shadow our site safety personnel as they keep our school safe, escort students who are not ready to learn, break up or stop physical fights, and monitor bathrooms for activities I care not to describe. They are not afraid to risk their own safety to protect the entire school community. Ask them how many times they have been injured during the course of doing their job. They willingly accept this as part of their job. So unless you have better solutions for how to manage the small group of students who create these situations, I suggest you just thank the staff for what they are doing. Patty, community member. How much damage and destruction does a person need to cause before they are restrained? When a person is out of control, excuse me, sometimes the best measure for everyone is to restrain that person as that will keep them from further harming themselves or others. And the video of the boy being restrained doesn't provide enough information for me to weigh in or whether or not restraining him was justified. But there are clearly a lot of security and staff members present who could better gauge what measures were taken. However, posting the video and invoking race without any of the facts was a very damaging and destructive thing to do. Ellie clearly has her own agenda, and she has all along and will not stop at nothing. How much more havoc, chaos, and destruction does Hurricane Ellie need to cause before someone will restrain her? Board, please let this be that time. Excuse me. I know you can't recall her as she is an elected official, and that is our own fault for electing her, but you can vote her out as president. Hopefully, Dr. Lewis will do a better job in leading rather than destroying AUSD. Jerry Marchese, community member. I watched the video clip and then heard about the incident from my daughter who witnessed it. What she said compared to what the clip shows showed sound like two different things. She said she was terrified as the male was out of control, angry, and challenging any student or staff member he saw to fight them. She was afraid for the female officer until she was able to get him to the ground. She said she didn't abuse him, she helped him from himself. She also helped everyone else. Thank you. Rebecca Dean, community member. It's crazy to me how board president finally posted this awful video and was very, excuse me, just one minute, I got it. Joe, can you pause the clock? Sorry about that. Okay.
Do you need a little break, Ms. Betancourt?
I just need to drink a little water, maybe two seconds.
All right, we'll give you a little breather there. That's a hard job.
I'm sorry, I have a cold.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's totally fine. I just feel bad I'm slowing down the process. Okay.
Great. We appreciate you.
Okay, I'm gonna start over, Joe. Rebecca Dean, community member. It's great to me how board president kindly posted this awful video and was very kind with what she said, and the Antioch Herald and East County Today took it and blogged it and posted it in a way that stirs up drama. She stated that she didn't know what happened. She stated allegations. She didn't state that these were facts. She stated that she will take the video and take it serious and fully investigate to get the full story. That way, the concerned community members can get a proper answer. Because whether you people want to believe it or not, the black and brown community get treated different. Antioch Herald and East County Today love to post misinformation and take your statements out of context. Those two need a new freaking job instead of stirring up drama. Lawrence Dwell, community member. What a shame that certain people take what East County Today, Mike Burkholder, and Antioch Herald, Alan Payton, and run with it. Read what Householder said. They took it out of context, you guys. Stop making this an Ellie war and respect her as your school board president. All she called for was a proper investigation, that's it. Talk about the subject instead of attacking her. Earl Jackson, community member. Transparency needs to happen. The video shows a kid being held down and controlled. What are you all missing? If my son would have been hit by this kid, you would be hearing about it. I'm glad this punk got arrested, he needs discipline. Another question I got, is the president of the school board the same person doing illegal stuff with the mayor? Someone needs to deal with her. That ain't right. Lynette Chavez, community member. Thank you, Ms. Householder, for sticking to what's right and what you believe in. The community appreciates your effort on this use of force situation. Excuse me. Name not provided, community member. The only reason why President Ms. Householder used use of force in her Facebook posts because that's what category it falls it falls under. Not that hard to be mature about it, it's just an investigation. The community wants to hear what the use of force protocol. Thank you for your time.
Would you like me to read for a bit or just cover a little to read for a moment?
And you pick up for a few, that would be amazing.
Yeah, you tell me where you are, let me.
I'm on Tiffany Burke's, community member. I believe it is page 27.
Superintendent Anello, would you like me to read for a bit?
That would be great. Are you sure, Kelly? I would appreciate that.
I don't do nearly as good as Ms. Betancourt or you, but I will give it my best.
You'll do great.
Tiffany Burke's, community member. Stephanie, why is it that when the board president says anything about police, you get extremely defensive and instantly send Antioch Herald and East County to post misinformation about her? I think this is ridiculous and you need to step down. You get paid a lot of money, that should be going to our students. You are useless, you are shady, you are drama fueled. You are obviously threatened by Householder for who knows why. You're an awful person, and I don't know how you sleep at night. Name not provided, community member. This meeting was intended for the investigation of this terrible video floating around. Instead, this turns into an attack on an honest board member who is concerned. At the end of the day, I don't know how pulling someone's dreads down is necessary. Name not provided, community member. Restraint policy? Are you kidding me? This kid was intimidating other students and then attacked one and other staff and other school staff. Householder, do you care more about the criminals than my son who knows this bully? Please remove Householder as board president. I have never seen a more divisive, uninformed, and incompetent board president. We need to hear from Dr. Clyde Lewis of why you let her misrepresent your conversations with you when that clearly didn't happen. Please set the record straight. This lady is out of control. I see why Antioch has so many challenges. Catherine Barker, community member. The board should back President Householder in starting the conversation. From my understanding, this is about future cases, and it does not matter that an investigation is ongoing. Why does the board shy away from difficult topics? Charles Rigby, community member. I am completely in shock of how the situation with young black student was handled in that video. There is no excuse for how it was handled regardless of what happened before. I urge the board to start talking about how these situations are meant to be handled and reported. I understand there is an investigation underway, but it is not against the rules to discuss procedure. Name not provided. Superintendent Anello always leaks information when anything regarding her job is discussed. This isn't a moment to be angry about the fact that there is an investigation. This is the moment to be angry about how security handled that boy. Name not provided. I hope the board is able to have a civil discussion about how to handle these occurrences. I support the board president's initiative to dive into this difficult topic. We support you, Ellie Householder. Thank you for making the uncomfortable decisions and for keeping your head high. Marcus Lavelle, another community member. Another young man of color subdued with excessive force, this time in our own backyard. I urge the board to protect students of color. The reasons for him being pinned by his hair matter less than the fact that every single kid in that video in the video has to witness this horror helplessly. You have to do better. Concerned parent of multiple Antioch High School students, community member. Ms. Householder, once again, you leave me perplexed and dumbfounded at the level of your lunacy, stupidity, and abuse of power in the position you have no right to hold. The calling of this meeting again demonstrates your fathomless need for attention and your insatiable, undenining personality of, quote, "look at me," unquote. It would be interesting to see what Sigmund Freud would say about your superego, your gardance, your gandarin response, sorry, I'm not familiar with that word, to the situation without the presence of information shows your immaturity and general lack of professionalism to the position. Any clear-headed, rational adult would have seen this not as a soapbox opportunity to stand on and scream racism, but something to educate yourself on before speaking. Or was this your goal, to take the potential tinderbox situation and set it ablaze, watching the school burn down, which you yourself were too weak, emotional, too feeble-minded mentally, and too apathetic to attend? Have you ever thought of thanking the staff for protecting the other students and staff from the student who already has a history of bringing guns to school and expulsions? The amount of force used in this situation has was categorically appropriate. Slowing the video down on your personal social media accounts to make the situation look worse than it was, was baseline infantile. I challenge you to hold down an adult-sized person. I have and it's not easy. I challenge you to attempt to speak to an irate teenager. They do not just calm down and speak and seek immediate reason. If the city board, which you are on, had allowed for a site safety officer, this situation would have been different. However, you bowed down on hands and knees to the criminals, troublemakers, and delinquents of this city who did not want their children held accountable, to allow them instead to bully and to terrorize the students there to learn. I hope at the end of this meeting, you're allowing for increased use of force. You allow employees to do their job and not fear the president of the school board will break the Brown Act employee rights and make questionable ethical choices. I hope that the changes, excuse me, I hope the charges you are being investigated regarding Brown Act violations stick and you are held accountable for associated with terrorists. Unless this meeting is to fully support the employees, the employee, teachers, and students of Antioch High School, you are misguided. And as always, I look forward to any recall vote in the future. Nicole Sedano, community member. Ellie Householder, you need to stop race baiting and stop dividing and destroying this community and district apart. You didn't even have the facts about what happened at Antioch High that day, but yet decided to post a video before even reaching out to the principal. A fight broke out amongst two students. A staff member was assaulted, a weapon was brought on campus, and yet you still made it about race and brutality against the black community. Common sense will tell you that a weapon was brought on campus and a fight had just occurred and a staff member was also assaulted, that the student would have to be detained and of course, police would have to be called because a weapon was on campus and because of the assault and battery as well. You are clueless about protocol. Being that you are under investigation yourself for your own criminal activities, you should really worry about yourself and what's going to be happening to you and your future rather than trying to ruin the school district's reputation and do a smear campaign on schools when we really have amazing people in our district that actually care about the future of our kids. All you care about is your own political agenda. Katrina DeAndes staff, I am a teacher at Antioch High School. I was appalled to see that the school board president, Ms. Householder, would repost a sensitive picture and video of students and staff at my school. I also saw the image on social media and my first reaction was to check with my administrator to make sure they knew it was on social media and to get more information. We as school staff may not post pictures of our students without permission. Why should our board members be subject to a different standard? All of this leads me to believe that the school board president has some nefarious agenda that doesn't actually include the safety of our students or our staff or students. It was our responsibility to educate you as youth, Ms. Householder. It is not our responsibility to educate you now. This behavior from a board president is embarrassing and appalling. Superintendent Nello is knowledgeable and thorough and I appreciate her leadership in this matter. And I absolutely know that she has the safety of our students and staff as her top priority, as does the administration and staff at Antioch High School. Lisa Kennedy staff. It is extremely disheartening as an AUSD and AHS staff member to feel that members of our current board are actively working to undermine our staff and our safety. We are teaching full classes during a pandemic. Antioch's COVID rates are the highest in the county, passing 1,000 confirmed cases in the last 14 days. We were refused school resource officers. We are in the midst of threat daily while still being held to the highest of professional standards to educate and serve our youth. Yet decisions that affect our health, our safety, and our very lives are being made by board members who do not even feel safe enough to meet in person yet. This is not right. As teachers, we have to make the daily decision whether to keep our classroom doors open in hopes of avoiding COVID infections or keeping them closed and locked to avoid school shootings or other potential acts of violence. Not only is this not right, quite frankly, it is terrifying. Come to our campuses, sit in our classrooms, ride along with site security, see what a day in the life on campus is really like. Stop using us as political propaganda from the safety of a Zoom meeting when we are the ones in the trenches. Ria Cave, community member. Get police officers out of schools, especially ones with reputations of being racially insensitive and discriminatory. These are children you're dealing with and this was absolutely, this was absolutely use of force. Watching the video of this poor kid being pushed to the ground and surrounded by officers, I couldn't help but feel absolute disgust and rage against those who are supposed to be helping our communities. The kid must have been scared, he wasn't even resisting. To have this happen in front of his colleagues and friends, I can't even imagine what must have been running through his mind. Whether or not you decide who is responsible for this, you cannot deny the trauma that you caused this child. Get police officers out of schools. Laura Young staff, I am writing in support of Antioch High School staff, Strategic Management Security, and Antioch Police Department. Thank you for keeping our school community safe. Ellie Householder, you should be censured or removed from your position. You post on social media a major assumption. You sensationalize a video with only partial information of the, of an incident. So irresponsible of an elected official. How do you know it was excessive force? Have you been put, have you been put through the extensive training we have? I would like to thank Stephanie Anello for her continued support through 2021 with, through 2021, you have invested in our students and staff. You know the district in and out. There's no one else I'd rather have leading our district during this time. Name not provided, community member. Use of force policies as it relates to the Antioch High School incident is a waste of time. This kid obviously has anger issues and was a menace on campus that day. I would like to thank Superintendent Nello for her professional action about investigating this matter. You are the best AUSD has ever had. Householder clearly is not mature enough to understand what an investigation looks like and it is incredibly improper of her to ask the superintendent to do illegal acts by having them quote, testify, unquote, in front of her when it violates employment rights and student rights. Why would she post pictures slash videos of students not involved in the incident? She posted that stuff with my children in the picture implying wrongdoing. I would be upset. This superintendent is a professional. Lisa.
Kelly?
Yes.
You want to finish this next comment and then Ms. Betancourt will come back on and you guys can tell, team, are you good with that?
Well, thank you, I'm very good with that. This is tough.
All right, thank you.
Lisa. Well, I can predict how tonight's comments will go. Ellie will have a bunch of her buddies post comments attacking Superintendent Nello in an effort to take the attention off the fact that she inappropriately posted and commented on a video showing the end of a situation involving students. When you think about it, it's really kind of funny because the only reason she posted the video was to deflect attention off of the allegations that she and Mayor Thorpe are being investigated for Brown Act violations. Deflecting, deflecting when she is attacked has been her MO since she has been on the board. Rather than discussing the district's use of force policies and procedures, the board should be discussing Ellie's abuse of power. And that's the end of that comment and I am on page 34, Ms. Betancourt.
Thank you, Kelly, I appreciate you. Laura, community member. President Householder, I am outraged that you would post a video of an incident without knowing any of the facts. Can you even fathom the damage you continue to do to the district and the city of Antioch? This is beyond irresponsible. I saw the posts of the emails that were disclosed through the public records request and I am outraged that you are continuing with your old tactics. You manipulate everyone around you to try to get your way, just like you did regarding school resource officers. Did you even stop to think that if Antioch High School had a school resource officer on campus, this whole situation could have been avoided? Just the presence of an officer can settle a situation down before it gets too far. And having an officer who is on campus regularly and has an opportunity to build relationships with students is even better. Brentwood is celebrating their new school resource officers. We could have had that too if you and the mayor Thorpe hadn't manipulated things to get your way and half of the cost would have been covered by a grant. Your interference needs to stop. Lila, community member. I must say publicly, thank you to Ms. Velma Wilson. I do not know her personally, but I read her comments she wrote on Antioch High School Facebook. Then I started asking a few people if they know her and I have heard amazing things about her. I was very impressed by her position regarding the situation. I now know that she is African American and heard she is also the Bay Area Humanitarian of the year. Well, your post exemplifies why you were selected, because you seem to speak in fairness and clarity. No, I've never been interested to volunteer at a school. I admit I drop my kids off and go about my business. Parents, we have to do better because kids are bringing this craziness to school and it is not fair to all the school staff to deal with. So to Velma with the, I apologize. So to Velma Wilson, if you are listening, thank you and I hope I will meet you at one of the school sites. Stephanie Anello, I hope to meet you as well because I can tell if Velma Wilson supports you, then you must be a great asset. The board should allow the superintendent to do a full presentation so it is fair for all concerned. Thank you to the staff for doing what you can do to help keep children safe. Janet Anderson, community member. I am very disgusted with what I saw in regards to the video of the student getting his hair pulled by APD. Like what kind of school would allow that to happen? Not only did the student get his hair pulled by the police officers, but also was restrained by two grown adults on top of him. Shame on you, AUSD. Margot Lopez, community member. Ms. Householder, I am infuriated that you would post a video on your board Facebook page when you admit yourself you don't know the details. If you don't know the details, how can you make assumptions and then post that this has anything to do with race? You obviously hate AUSD and will do anything to bash it. Reading some of the posts on ECT from people who went to school with you, it looks like your hatred of AUSD goes way back to when you were a student there. Instead of promoting and supporting and even celebrating the good things that are going on, you continue to attack, attack, attack. If you hate AUSD so much, just leave. AUSD would be better off without you. Signed, a community member. Those resources, those resources officers are hired to protect our children, not to harm them as a parent. That's the worst fear, to drop your child, your young child off to school thinking they are safe. It terrifies me that a school would even tolerate such behavior from school official. Where's the outrage? Perhaps of that was a white kid or a teacher's kid. Things would be appropriate different. We make our young men go to school to stay out the streets and out of trouble, out of police officers' way. But to know that this school allows those same uneducated people to protect our kids at school is horrible. No justice, no peace. They should be fired and criminal charges brought up on them. That use of force was unnecessary and could have been turned extremely dangerous. What if they would have killed him or damaged him for life? Jack, community member. Wow, just wow. As a parent of a child in a school in Antioch, I am appalled with the video that came out of the young man getting restrained in the most horrible way by Antioch High School security and the Antioch police officers. I hope charges come and what happened, come about what happened immediately. Roy Ledford, community member. Once again, Householder is showing that her anti-law enforcement agenda is more important than the safety and well-being of the students of this district. She attacked the actions of the police department and school staff while admitting she didn't know the facts. She has become a liability to this school district and needs to be removed from the board. Ariel, community member. I am one of the many students who sent that video to the account called Bay Area Talk on Instagram, knowing that the person will bring accountability to the school district. When I saw what the campus security did to the student, I was beyond scared and horrified and how they handled it. And then we had the Antioch police come in and start pulling his hair and he wasn't even resisting. And let alone fights happen almost every week at our school, which is a whole other issue. But what the campus security did and Antioch police did was wrong. I am honestly scared to go to school now, not because of the fights, but because of the adults on campus and cops. Please do something about this immediately. Ally, community member. It's weird when I was trying to post a, submit a public comment yesterday night, the link wasn't working. And I got many messages about that too. But ultimately, I am putting in a public comment that my kid showed me from social media. If you work in AUSD, you should all be ashamed of yourself. And for anyone who supports the, supports the force that was used, you are a disgusting human being. Kim, community member. I am an African American woman, mom, sister, and daughter, and I am absolutely appalled that race relations have divided this community because of people like Ellie Householder, who truly has no idea of what it is to be black. I am sick and tired of you and false narrative. This current situation that occurred at Antioch High has zero to do with Black Lives Matters. Kids will fight and if you are a sensible adult, you are going to attempt to break up the kids from fighting. I am a mom of three young kings and they have gotten in physical altercations with each other. And I break up the fight and every last one gets consequences and a glorified ass whooping from me. Yes, I am old school and in the black homes we whip our children, not because we hate or dislike them, but because we love them and want them to understand as they feel the sting of the belt that they think of the sting of society if they don't find better ways in handling confrontation. I was fortunate enough to meet Ms. Keisha while I was with Ms. Velma Wilson, helping serve hot chocolate and donuts a couple of years ago. And I told her that I hope she is here when my children come because kids really look up to her and know she doesn't take no mess. It is people like her and Ms. Velma that is needed to support the kids. The school board needs to look at budgeting more resources to support the schools with security. Many of the kids are bigger than the adults and the adults deserve to know they have proper support. I saw Velma last week near Black Diamond and she was assisting two students and a mom who I believe may be homeless and to watch her interact with them brought tears to my eyes. Those kids gave her a big hug and said, "Love you, Ms. Velma." It is things like that that we should put more energy to. There was no excess, this, there was no excessive use of force. Ellie Householder, I challenge you to hang out at lunchtime with kids when kids instigate other kids to fight. Actually, I bet you would run away and not do anything. While the site safety staff like Ms. Keisha, they don't run, but they put themselves in harm's way to attempt to deescalate the fight. Let's teach our kids to be respectful, especially to adults and authority figures. Destiny Roberts, community member. Thank you, Ellie Householder, and the best board president we ever had for sticking to your gut and having the courage to bring up topics like today's use of force. People should be able to disagree, but come together for our kids. Ebony Richardson, community member. Hi there, thank you for your time to read my comment. I just wanted to point out how you professional these articles, how unprofessional these articles are between Antioch Herald and Stephanie Anello. Seems like they're teaming up together against the board president. Why is she having conversations with Alan Payton telling him information to write a hateful blog? Does she not, does that not seem shady? Stephanie, you are not doing your job and talking about it with Ms. Householder to bloggers and the people who wrote these distasteful articles about someone who is technically your boss. Name not provided, community member. Totally wrong, lease on campus, treating the child like he was a runaway slave. That situation brought tears to my eyes and pain in my heart. Name not provided, community member. The amount of force used on the teenager at Antioch High School was clearly unnecessary. The situation not only could be deescalated by simply talking about the situation to the victim, but also by letting them know they were going to arrest them so they could put them in handcuffs peacefully. There should be regulations in place about how much force an officer can use depending on the situation. Kristen Porter, community member. Once again, Ellie has jumped out of her lane and into one that she has zero business being in. On your Facebook post, you wrote, when you wrote, "While I don't know the details," that should have been your cue to stop writing. You do not have any details yet, you jumped in to start with the finger pointing. Your constant desire to create racial tension in our town is simply exhausting. You are big on words, but boy, would I love to see how you would have handled the situation at AHS had you been present. Would you simply allow the young man to continue to beat on staff members and threaten classmates? When he refused to stand down and became even more aggressive, would you jump in with your white savior complex and have a little chat with him? What if he struck you? Would you have been happier with you getting hurt while he ran off to who knows what, to do who knows what to others? Knowing you and your petty vendetta against Superintendent Anello, you will no doubt use this unnecessarily called emergency meeting to somehow break, place the blame on her as you always take any chance you can to try to bring her capabilities into question. I have no problem with wanting to look into the situation to be assured that all measures to deescalate were used and to have standards to follow moving forward. But the way you go about things with your Facebook posts and your TikTok BS suggesting that those trying to protect are to blame before you know anything is the work of someone without morals, standards, or maturity. You have this exaggerated sense of entitlement that does nothing to help and everything to tear down. I really do wish you would just leave. Name not provided, community member. How is the board president, how is it the board president can justify making condescending comments to the media about the manner in which this was handled by the district when she never once contacted the superintendent for details of the incident? She also noted once again blackmail students were being targeted. She continues to place herself in the middle of situation and judges for her own political gain. Get the facts first. Shagufa Khan, community member. As a community activist and someone who cares for the Antioch community, watching the video of the student having use of force being used on him by the campus security and getting his hair pulled by the Antioch police officers was appalling to say the least. Yes, the kid got into a fight, but fights always happen in schools. Not saying it's okay, but the way the adults on campus handled the situation was sickening. I had several students reaching out to me in regards to the situation and telling me how it made them feel unsafe, watching their fellow classmate being rough handled by campus security and Antioch PD. How can we allow the adults on campus, including police officers, use so much force on a minor like they did? I hope anyone who agrees with this force on a child doesn't have their own child get restraint and his or her pulled by the police. Because if this happened to your child, you would be pissed too. I am pissed. Yes, he is not my child, my friend, my classmate, but I still care for him and he is a minor nonetheless. If anything, the way that was handled will probably cause him more trauma than ever, which will probably lead him to act up more.[1759.76] which will probably lead him to act up more. We need more restorative practices on campuses. What is restorative justice? For those of you who don't know, restorative justice practices and programs are promising alternatives that help students learn to solve problems on their own, respond to conflict non-violently, while contributing to students' social and emotional development and keeping them in school, and simultaneously improving school culture. This is what we need. We still don't have mental health counselors, school psychologists, nurses, full-time bilingual aides and other supportive and needed assets to help our students and progress our school district in a positive light. Restraining a student the way they did and pulling on a student's hair is just not the way to create a safer school. Tyler Reed, community member. First off, why wasn't there a statement released by the superintendent regarding this student getting manhandled by the police and school staff? Do they support this type of behavior? Because this is how I'm seeing it. If the school district doesn't release a, a statement of how poorly the situation was handled by their employees and the police, I will probably take my students out of this district and put them in a charter school. Angry Mom, community member. Ellie, you are a freaking joke. Lewis and Hernandez, try thinking for yourselves and stop being Ellie's little puppets. We will recall the board president, and you are next, so choose your side wisely. Hashtag Angry Mom. Jerry Hicks, staff. It would seem that many of the current board members do not understand that AUSD staff's main goal is to educate the student body while making school a safe place to be. Since some on the board think that it is their duty to undercut these attempts to make schools a safe place, then it is probably time to look into recalling the board members. I do not think of our school board as an investigative body. When I see emails demanding to have witnesses brought forward before the board, I cringe, and I think that the board president has no real concept of the scope of her duties. They are wasting our time and money and are heading in the direction of making the schools in our district a place for families to avoid. George, community member. Question for President Householder. When did your title change from president to judge and jury? You posted a video on your webpage without knowing or any of the facts. You actually have the gall to admit that you don't have the details, but you go on to imply that the treatment of the student was racist. How do you know this from the short video? Is there more to the video that you have not shared? You even stated that you aren't sure, but the incident appears to be on the Antioch High Campus. Questions for the rest of the board. How long are you going to let this behavior go on? She is giving AUSD a black eye and making you all look ridiculous like the rest of her puppets. Kristin Robles, community member. I would really like to know what kind of training was put in place that you guys had to pin that young man down by his dreads. Kelly Garcia. I am ashamed of the video of the student being detained. I hope that the superintendent is open to taking about changing the way this type of scenario is dealt with. I understand that sometimes situations get out of hand and violent, but this should have been de-escalated and the board should have been notified firsthand. Robert Tagalong, community member. By reading Mr. Rocha's email Friday, it sounds like this kid was having a mental breakdown. Maybe we need more protocols in place to be able to calm the kid before using force like, like seen in the video. Verbal threats can be serious, but they could have done much better. Call parents, dismiss them home upon parent approval, and call a parent-teacher meeting and go from there. Seems like police presence antagonized the kid even more. Name-not-provided, community member. Thank you, Ellie Householder, school board president, for calling this meeting, because as a parent of an AHS student, I would really like to know more details about the actual situation and what measures were taken. We can always learn how to make processes better. We learn every day. Rosemary Guerrero, community member. I am appalled that every time Householder brings up concerning issues that it gets blown out of control, and it's an Ellie problem now. No, we are parents and we need answers. We need a new superintendent. Her ties with the media are horrible. DJ, community member. Ellie, how irresponsible of you to post a video without knowing anything about it. Not only was my daughter there, she was in the video you had the audacity to post. You did not have my permission to post her image. Since you don't have any of the facts, let me share this with you. My daughter was in the quad heading to lunch when the incident occurred. She was scared for her safety because the boy was out of control. It wasn't until he was restrained that she felt safe. Are you saying that his rights are more important than her safety? If you continue in your efforts to handcuff staff so they cannot safely handle a situation like this, I will need to pull all of my children out of your schools because no one will be safe. Name-not-provided, community member. Let's play a game of what if? What if the student in the video had not been restrained? How many more people would have, would he have attacked? How far would the situation have gone? Would it have ended like the recent incident in Santa Cruz where a student was stabbed and killed? The truth is that sometimes forces needed to stop a bad situation from escalating to a point where the unimaginable happens. Thank you, AHS, AHS staff, security staff and APD for stopping the student before the unimaginable happened. Mark Jordan, community member. Ms. Householder and Antioch school board members, our right to you concerning item 2A for the special meet, special meeting called for September 2nd, 2021 by Chair Householder. I have also read the emails from Householder and the response by Ms. Anello Superintendent as printed in the news. This agenda item is in response to an event that occurred at Antioch High School concerning what appears to be a student that refused to comply with directives from educators, staff and security after making serious threats. The full details are unknown or have not been determined by a completed investigation. Your meeting and what appears to be a snap evaluation by some members of the Antioch School Board and the Antioch City Council are inappropriate, lack due process and are dangerous. Be aware that if you continue forward, you may be in violation of California law and as such may be subject to significant detrimental litigation, both to the district and to you individually. Stop now while you can. Until the investigation is completed, no consideration should be given to the agenda item, and I suggest an immediate table of the item until the investigation is complete and all the facts are known. Such a motion can be immediately called and is not debatable, requiring, requiring only a majority vote. Feelings and opinions have no place at the school board now or after the completion of the investigation. Wait for the facts, act with logic. Mark Jordan, citizen of Antioch. Name-not-provided. First, let me say that I am a graduate of Antioch High School. I have had two daughters graduate in the last few years, and my son is currently a sophomore at your school. We have nothing but positive experiences with Mr. Rocha's staff, teachers, faculty, since we have been there. My son witnessed the incident last week and came home and told us about it. Furthermore, there was an incident across the street just two days before where there was a student fight where a gun was brandished. I am concerned with the actions of Ms. Householder and the trouble she may bring to Antioch High School. Her post was inaccurate, foolish and troublesome. In my opinion, it was nothing more than race-baiting. She did not even know the facts. A student was assaulted, a staff member was assaulted, and then the student was detained. I do not see the issues there. My concern is that Ms. Householder's claims that staff and security would be unwilling to step in and diffuse the next situation at Antioch High School. My concern is, is that the kids will act out even more, knowing that they are basically, that they basically can't be touched. We, as parents, have the right to know that our children will be safe when we leave them in your care each day. Furthermore, I think that action needs to be taken against Ms. Householder by Mr. Rocha and the AHS staff. This kind of propaganda needs to be stopped, cold in its tracks for the safety of our students is put at risk. I am proposing a student and staff walkout until Ms. Householder resigns. We, as a community, and you as the school leaders, cannot allow Ms. Householder to continue to disrupt the education of our children. We cannot allow her to jeopardize the safety of many because of the ignorance of one. Something needs to be done before our kid's safety is secondary to Ms. Householder's political agenda. It's not only the safety of students, it's the safety of your staff at risk as well. Arnie Simonson. The calling of this special meeting and the agenda proposed by Chair Eleanor Householder is totally inappropriate. The school board administration has an ongoing investigation, and the school board should not interfere with that investigation until it is concluded. The item can be placed on a regularly scheduled meeting once the investigation is concluded. Arnie Simonson, MNC. Mike Brookholder. Dear Board of Trustees, given the hate mail I've received since posting an article of this meeting, I feel I need, I feel the need to set the record straight. How I found out about this Mickey Mouse kangaroo court meeting was due to the actions of none other than Ellie Householder. It was Householder who posted there was going to be a special meeting when no information was available. So I then requested through a public records request emails associated with topics and backgrounds of what was to be discussed. This is not complicated nor some giant conspiracy theory. I am glad I did, since there is no staff reports with the items on today's agenda. These emails have been made public for transparency purposes. Perhaps instead of tackling use of force, the Board of Trustees should consider a social media policy instead wasting, instead of wasting staff time and causing divides in the community. Another item requests the board president step down or the board itself actually take the action to remove her as board president. For all of the Householders' puppets who are spreading misinformation that I'm getting paid by the district, you know it's a lie and are free to do your own public records request. Shame on all of you. Given the Antioch Police Department has uncovered possible criminal conduct between Householder and the mayor Lamar Thor, perhaps AUSD should do its own investigation on whether Ms. Householder is engaged in similar activities that may be affecting the school district. That would be a better use of everyone's time. Continue down this path, Householder, as leading student. Mike Brookholder, co-host WTF California Podcast, publisher of EastCountyToday.net. Willie Memes. To President Ellie Householder, to Superintendent Stephanie Anello and School Board, my name is Willie Memes. I am the Education Chair of the East County NAACP. I come you tonight about an incident that took place on Antioch High School campus not long. That incident revolves around tonight's emergency meeting. I was somewhat horrified by what I saw on social media. I saw either the Antioch Police Department or your campus security using unnecessary force on a young black boy. It brought back memories of George Floyd. That young man, like George Floyd, was being pinned to the concrete ground by two officers or campus security. And one of them had the audacity to grab and pull his hair, pinning his head to the ground. This was a clear case of child abuse, along with a violation of civil rights. Perhaps the DA should investigate this child abuse incident. The East County NAACP is quite concerned. Willie Memes, MA Education Chair, EC NAACP. Lee Clark. Good evening, President Householder and Board Trustees. I find it unfortunate that a meeting based around the opportunity for personal agendas has been called. In 2020, the communities of Antioch voted for a new school board in hopes that the needs of our students would be addressed after years of neglect. We were hoping to gain a board that would stop focusing on how much money each student made the district and start doing something to increase our academic standards and student learning experience. Instead, we have been left with a board that is filled with personal agendas that align more toward the city council's goals than that of our schools. Our campuses are filled with more students than before the pandemic. Families are choosing to keep their children home because the classes are so crowded that at almost all grade levels, kids do not have enough desks. Schools are understaffed, and the school administrators are spending their days dealing with COVID regulations and, and, I apologize, and unable to focus on student need. The board should be working to increase staff that is tasked with executing COVID requirements. The board should be working to open new school locations and staffing them to address the increased student body. But instead, here we are tonight discussing a TikTok video that was posted by an underage student lacking context and being used to raise a political issue that should be addressed at a city level, not at the school board. Today has become public knowledge that one of you will be resigning soon because something became more important to you than your political duties. Another is under investigation for violating the Brown Act. Two members are so upset about who was elected on the board, you have lost your will to fight for what is right. The remaining trustee, the public, is waiting for you to even propose the programs you talked about with the community during your campaign. I hope you all can take a moment to reconsider why you are, are here, because it is not for the education of Antioch's children. You're in the wrong job. Velma Wilson. Good evening, school board members, superintendent administrators, district staff and all school site staff and community. I am Velma Wilson, representing Velma Wilson. The fight that occurs at Antioch High unfortunately is not the first and will not be the last. Ellie, you really need to grow up and conduct yourself as a logical adult. Kids of all races, creeds and genders will and are going to fight. Have you ever, have you actually attempted to offer any school site support during lunch or after school? Do you know how to gauge or look for the signs by kids, body language, that a fist, that a fight is about to happen? Do you have authentic human connection that engages students? Ellie, you haphazardly post a video and even went as far as stating that you have no background. So the question is, why did you post it? A logical adult would have contacted the superintendent and inquire, not react and violating the privacy of all involved. Furthermore, will please stop making everything about race. How about authentically support Superintendent Stephanie Anello and trust that she is investigating the situation? Stop acting like a dictator, better yet resign. You need to understand what your role is as a board member. Read the criteria for site safety. Review the safety plans that were previously presented by Scott Bergerhouse and Associate Superintendent Christina Barra, and again, grow the hell up. I am one that can speak on what really happens at the schools because I am there. Parents talk to your children. If they are holding grudges with fellow classmates since fourth grade, but now in eighth grade, get them some counseling. Let's do our part and support these educators who are teaching and working with students in some stressful times. We are AUSD, and that should go viral. Thank you again to every AUSD employee for your commitment to serve all students. Know that Velma Wilson has your back. That is the last comment for item 2A.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Benicourt. That was a journey. All right. And so with that, uh, back to what we are discussing this evening, which is the, uh, how we want to, as a district, deal with instances of use of force. And so I guess before jumping into discussion or picking up on the discussion from earlier, do we have a board policy, Superintendent Anello, regarding, uh, use of force?
I, if the board, I don't know offhand, but I would be, you know, if the board would like that information, I'd be happy to look it up.
Okay, okay, cool. Um, and then too, I mean, I said this at the beginning, but I just want to reiterate that I really view tonight as the first conversation of, uh, you know, Benny conversations. And so, uh, you know, I anticipate that, uh, we're going to have to meet again to talk about this and hopefully again and again. Uh, so just wanted to say that from the, from the onset, I don't necessarily know how, uh, yeah, what we want to decide on this evening. But yeah, uh, Trustee Rocha.
At this point, I think I want to take that advice and table this item and have the superintendent come back with any information as to what we have countywide, I mean, citywide or district-wide, just put it that way. Because I understand in a, uh, when something's going on, there's a process a principal has and the staff around them. And perhaps that needs to be explained before we go further. So at this time, I'd like to table it.
Um, so I think if we wanted to give, because there's like two things. So it's like table it, but then also kind of giving directions. So if we wanted to give direction, I would just, you know, say maybe a majority of us can, if we agree to give direction, do a little research, you know, and then bring this back to us. I'm fine with that, too. But I just kind of wanted to be clear that we do need a majority or a consensus at least to, to give, um, Superintendent Anello that, that direction. But I, I would actually tend to agree with you. And I mean, Superintendent Anello said that, you know, she doesn't know off the top of her head that every single board policy that we have is being facetious. Uh, Trustee Hernandez.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think we, we kind of knew that this conversation was coming. So, you know, I wish we did have a lot more of that information ready beforehand. And I think, you know, something I, I, I don't, I don't typically do this, but I think, you know, I feel like I need to respond to some of the, the, the comments that were said because.
Can I make a point of, I think we had a motion on the table. So in order to discuss this, we will need a, a second. And that doesn't mean the person agrees with Ms. Ro, with Trustee Rocha, but just.
Yeah, Superintendent Anello, I didn't hear a motion, that's why I followed up.
I said I tabled the item. That's a motion.
You had a motion? Okay, that's a motion.
That we tabled the item.
Trustee Rocha has moved to table the item. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Trustee Hack, and so let's continue the conversation now. Trustee Hernandez.
Yeah, because I think, you know, I, hearing these comments is, is something so challenging. I am just, I care about these students so much. That's the whole reason I, I am here. It's not about literally anyone else. The, the only opinions, uh, that matter the most to me are those of these students. And I heard a lot of voices that either, you know, saw this child as someone that could be their child or someone that could never be their child. And that was so disturbing to me because the reality of the day is that the students watching that and the student being pinned down could both be your child. And we need to make sure that as a school district, we're doing what we can to protect all of our students. That includes these students. We aren't, as individuals, we're not who we are on our worst days. We're not the worst thing we've ever done. I believe that each and every single one of our students here in the school district is redeemable. And they're not, the sum of who they are is not the worst thing they've ever done. I think that, you know, we need to be talking about how do we prevent and get to the place where these incidents happen? We shouldn't be talking about how hard should we be handling a student? We need to be talking about how we stop these things from happening. We, we just, we, we know that these issues are faced by particular subgroups of students. We know that students of color face these issues more often. And that's not something that divides us. Because at the end of the day, I need to make this so clear that when we handle issues that affect certain groups of students, it helps everybody. That data is so clear out there that helping subgroups of students helps everybody. And so I just want to make sure that we take this opportunity to truly start working on this process. And so I think that there is a discussion here to have. Because oftentimes, we've seen it with this board. We'll table an item, we'll say, we, we discuss things further, and we have not taken action on so many things that we've talked about. And, you know, every day that passes by that we don't have a policy on this is another opportunity for these types of events to happen. So I think it's, it's, it's that, you know, we have an opportunity for leadership here, and I'd love for us to pull and use as much of that as we can. And, and again, I am, you know, I, I apologize for, for, you know, for, for, for commenting specifically on comments, but I'm very passionate about this. And I know that our, our teachers and staff are doing the best they can, but a lot of the worst things that happen to people are done when people are doing the best they can. And we need to find ways to think about issues and problems and really brainstorm. Just because people are trying their best doesn't mean that there's pathways to do even better. And I really believe we can do that. But we need to be having these conversations, and they're challenging, and they're hard, and they're tough, and they get people angry. They become emotional. But that's the work that we literally signed up to do as a school board, is to have these conversations. So I just felt like I really needed to say that.
I think I need another point of order, sorry. We had a first, we had a second. The only things we can talk about are tabling or not tabling, and then we do have to do a roll call vote on that motion before we move on to talking about the item. And I appreciate your passion.
Yeah, um, so we could have discussion with, there's a motion out there. Somebody can make a motion to call for the vote, but we can't have discussion afterwards. Because I wouldn't want to prematurely call for a vote before everybody had an opportunity who wanted to speak up on this and speak up on it. So, um, so we do have a motion to table the item. And then, uh, from what I'm hearing, Trustee Hernandez is saying, saying that once, um, we need to, you know, basically capitalize on the opportunity that we have and to start this discussion. And so, um, so yeah, I don't know, Dr. Lewis.
So, uh, you know, I, 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 I would be remiss to say that, you know, I'm not direct. Well, I gave my position early. I don't want to get into that because again, it's an emotional thing for me. Um, so just a point of clarity for the motion. Is the point, uh, to table this with the idea that we're going to come back and have conversation, uh, at what point? Can we put, can we amend the date, uh, can we amend the motion to say, okay, we're going to table it until X date?
You can, you can provide a
Well, I mean, it's, it's Trustee Rocha's amendment. Would that be, would that be amenable for you?
Madam, Madam Chair, I don't, this, I mean, I'm okay with it. My direction was to table for now and allow our superintendent to give us a feedback of what we have in this district and how he, actually, how does the staff handle issues? We're not even aware because you're not there.
Yeah, no, I
What's number one? Do they pick, you know, do they go to the class and then talk to the young man? Young man doesn't do this, but then what's the next step? And what's the next step? When do you get to the point where you have to call an outside person that you can't handle during your own group?
So Trustee Rocha, that I agree with. Yeah, so that I agree with. I'm just, so my concern is if we table it, you know, and we say for now, that's not necessarily clear in terms of when we're going to come back and actually have the conversation. And I think this is a healthy conversation. And to your point, until we have a conversation about what those guidelines are, we are going to be continually spinning our wheels. Um, so, you know, I tend to agree with what, what you just said. However, uh, you know, I want to make sure that we actually have a date. And, you know, this just doesn't go into the, to the ether. So that's kind of, that's what I'm asking for.
I'm not sure how much time the superintendent needs, so I can't give you a date. I'm just saying I wanted to refer it back to her. Table today, refer to her, her, and bring back the information.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yeah, I'm not sure if functionally there's much of a difference between us having a conversation now and also talking about it later. I don't know what tabling does for the, because there's parts of this that we can talk about right now. Uh, and then there's parts of it that we can't talk about right now, right? Because we do need parts of that policy to have that conversation. But there's pieces of this. There's nothing that says that we can't talk about this now and later. So I'm not, I'm not really sure functionally what tabling it is going to do. Although I am 100% in favor, and let's set a date for when we're going to talk about this next. Uh, and if I, if I, if, you know, if I have to get that conversation started, I would say, can we talk about that at our next board meeting that's coming up next week? I, I say, why, why not?
Yeah, I actually do like the idea personally of setting a date. I like the idea of giving staff direction. I'm, the only thing I'm slightly concerned about is just like the technical aspect of if we table it, can we table it and then provide this direction with that? So I just want to make sure that there's clarity around that. But I do think that this is something, you know, maybe we can set a goal to, to check in about this at our meeting next week, uh, which I believe is the eighth. And then we can set, you know, and talk about it after that. Trustee, uh, Dr. Lewis, and then I'll go to Trustee Hack, who had their hand.
So I, I, you know, I wanted to make it clear too. I mean, this is, this is protocol for students, but it also, it, it supports the teachers as well. Because again, teachers that are there, and you know, as a former teacher, you know, I've been in situations where students, uh, sort of put me in a position where I have to defend myself. And it's important for me as a teacher in that situation to understand what, what the protocol is and how I respond to that situation. The same thing is true if a student is engaging with another student. It's important for me to understand what the protocol is engaging that student because there's a response time with law enforcement, right? Even the fastest law enforcement, let's say if they're there in five minutes, right? That is a lot of time for, for some negative things to happen. So we, we need to understand what the protocol is. So that way, we're protecting not just the student, not just the person of color, but everybody involved. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's more of a, you know, I want to make sure that, that we have this conversation because it is important. So.
Trustee Rocha, would you be willing to, oh, sorry, sorry, Trustee Hack, I'm sorry, I already recognized you. Trustee Hack.
That's fine. Um, Mary's made a motion, in essence. I've seconded it. I know Stephanie has already established the agenda for the next board meeting on Wednesday. That's been reviewed by the president and the vice president. We need to come up with the information that we are asking Stephanie to come up with and set a date in the future, uh, to have a further discussion.
Madam Chair, I would, I would add to my motion 60 days. Would that be sufficient?
It's your motion. You can have an amendment.
Okay, so now at this time, I, I add 60 days to with the, amend the motion to say that. And at this time, I called for the motion to be voted on.
Just ask really quick, Trustee Hack, are you amenable to that, um, amendment for Trustee Rocha's, um, initial motion to
I'm amenable to that as long as Stephanie feels that she can accomplish the process by that time.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I appreciate the, I, I appreciate the understanding that we're in the middle of a pandemic and we are the city with the largest number of contact tracing, and it's really taxing staff. So I appreciate that. I do want to say as, I just want to repeat my point of order. Once you have a table of something you can't go on to discuss, it has to be voted on. So it sounds like you have an amended motion, a second to the amended motion. And yes.
Yeah, so just so I'm clear, I'm, so if there's nothing that exists, that is a conversation. So, you know, it's, we're not saying created, as far as I'm, yeah.
There's penal code and there's ed code that
Just you handle with restraint.
Point of order. So then we, we vote on the initial motion of whether we are tabling this or not, right? And then afterwards, then we can deal with whatever amendments or additional motions, correct?
Well, if it's tabled, you can't, she just amended it.
If it is tabled, then yeah, then we move forward. And if it's not tabled, then we, we continue, right? So I'd say we just call for the initial motion.
Madam Chair, I, I amended it with the, and the second agreed to it, so it's really one motion.
Yeah, exactly. So what we're going to be, I'm going to call for the vote now, Ms. Cavalero. But the, just to be clear, what we're voting on. Trustee Rocha and Trustee Hack, uh, seconded, made a motion to table this item to a later date. Trustee Rocha amended the motion to add a 60-day, uh, goal timeline. And Hack, uh, Trustee Hack agreed to that amendment. And so now what we are, I'm calling for a vote, and it's on that amended motion. So the motion on the table right now is to table this and to add a 60-day timeline. So with that, Ms. Cavalero, if you could call the roll.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
No.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to table this item for up to 60 days passes 4-1 with President Householder voting against.
Great. Okay, moving on, item B. So looking at board notification, uh, policies and procedures, I would anticipate this probably going to be somewhat similar, uh, just in that we don't necessarily know the board policy offhand. But I'm assuming we have some public comments on this, so.
Yes, we do. I will go ahead and get started.
So, uh, just really quick question, can we take a maybe a two-minute bio break?
I would appreciate that, Louis.
Yeah, so.
It actually takes five minutes, so it is 8:22 right now. Let's come back at 8:27.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, it's eight twenty-nine. If Ms. Cavalero can reestablish our quorum before we move into the next item.
President Householder?
Here.
Vice President Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Alright, so next up, our last item on the agenda, item B, which is board notification policies. And I was just about to hand it over to Ms. Beckencourt to read the comments.
Thank you. Name not provided. She believes in the leadership of Superintendent Anello. She will notice the board when necessary, and not one board member, especially Ellie, Antonio, and Clyde, have a clue what is in race baiting. We support Superintendent Anello's ability to This item is yet another example of your overreach for power and and staff. Good evening Superintendent Anello, Board of Trustees, and all others in attendance tonight. I am writing in regards to this special meeting and just how out of line it truly is. I would first like to point out how Board President Householder social Facebook page without having the full story, and in her post, she said she was not passing any judgment. But clearly, she was being judge, jury, and executioner in her statements made by this about the student, staff, and law enforcement that were involved in this incident. Before any social media posts were made or even at all, a full investigation should have been made, finding out all of the details of the situation. This special board meeting is completely unnecessary and a waste of everyone's time as a full investigation is currently underway, but has not yet been completed. Why on earth would you call a special board before all of the facts have come to light and all parties involved have been interviewed? This just seems like a power play, when in truth, you don't have anything that can be done at that moment, as the investigation again has not been completed. Why not just wait to discuss this at next week, next week's regular board meeting, when all of the details will come to light? What is your play here? What exactly are you trying to accomplish besides try to embarrass or put blame on the shoulders of people who do not deserve it? Why can't you just let it run through the proper channels before you pass your own personal judgment off of the incident and those involved? Let's please act like we know what we're doing. All of the students of this district that you say you are here to support. Edward Grant. There is no universe where use of force like this shouldn't be notified to the board immediately. I believe that having a conversation about it is something that everyone should be on board with. I would love to understand why bringing it up is the problem, but the act itself is almost overlooked. Kate Callahan, community member. I am outraged at how the situation with that student was handled. There should never be use of violence against any student. The optics on this are very saddening. Please allow the conversation to at least start. Claudia C. Rodriguez, community member. First, thank you, Ms. Anello, for standing up for your staff at AUSD. Second, to board member Householder, stop trying to make this into a spectacle. You yourself are in more violations than anyone can fathom. Your lack of professional behavior is alarming. I suggest you vacate your seat as president of the board. You obviously know nothing of how a school runs. Name not provided, community member. Here's an idea. How about Householder notify the AUSD community about her criminal investigation that is pending? How about she notify all of us why she is being investigated for collusion? How about she notify us why she prefers to stay in online meetings? Could it be because she texts and colludes with other public officials the entire meeting if it's virtual? You are a joke, Householder. Just go away for once and for all. Name not provided, staff. I have been a teacher in AUSD for more than a couple of years now. I can't tell you how many times I have brought things to the attention of board members for them to reply. I didn't know that. It's astounding. So when I saw this item up on the agenda and doing some social media trolling, I will say I believe President Householder when she says she learned about this arrest from social media. Whatever your political views are, you should be upset that our representatives are being shut out from crucial information. The board has a duty to the public, which includes us teachers too, not those who make 200K plus at the district office. I'm glad to finally see someone on the board admit that Stephanie and her gang are great with smoke and mirrors. Melissa, community member. Notification policies? How about you Ellie, not posting a child on Facebook to disseminate a perhaps embarrassing moment for the kid? I hope that mom sues you. How about protecting other students and staff from harm? What policies are going to have in place for that? You say you didn't have all the facts, but went on with your own, with your agenda judgment behavior. Resign. Mark, staff. I'm not sure this item qualifies for a special meeting, but since it's on the agenda, I think this would be a great opportunity for Ellie to set the record straight. Ellie, when you first learned about the incident in Antioch High School, who did you notify? Did you contact the superintendent to make sure she was aware of it, or did you just post it? If you can truly say that you immediately contacted the superintendent, I will eat my favorite hat. While I think my hat is safe, because in your post, you said it looked like an incident was at Antioch High School, and you didn't know the details surrounding this footage. Clearly, you made the post without talking to anyone with any knowledge regarding the incident, and your actions deserve discussion by the board, as posting a video like this without having the facts is impulsive and reckless. Not the actions a board president should take. Why would you even name Antioch High School if you are not sure that the incident happened there? Or if it even happened in AUSD? The board should be discussing what actions to take against you for your careless disregard. I would suggest that they censure you, but that obviously has no effect on your destructive behavior. Anissa Silva, community member. I am a parent of one of the many students that was viewed on the board president's Facebook page and apparently her Instagram with the TikTok video of fight, of fight that occurred during lunch. I did not consent to have my daughter's face broadcast throughout social media. I would like to request Ellie Householder be censured due to her inappropriate behavior. My daughter felt safe with security and campus staff handling the fight. Patty, community member. I agree that the policy for notification should be reviewed as changes needed to be as changes need to be made needs to be taken out of the notification process, as she has proved once again that she does not know how to responsibly handle the information. She has a history of posting things inappropriately, regardless of the impact to the school district and the city of Antioch. Here she is once again posting inappropriately and trying to incite a racial divide in the city. What president would possibly think that that is acceptable? Oh, yeah, Donald Trump. We can't, we, we can't impeach Ellie, although she certainly deserves it, so the next best thing is to take away her position as president. She has shown repeatedly that she is not fit to be president. Board, how much more damage does she need to do before you will do anything about her? Name not provided, community member. Good evening. Did I miss something? What is the urgency or life-threatening situation that couldn't wait until next week? Once again, Ellie Householder, you wasted staff, district staff, and the community's time, finances, and energy over nonsense. Kids fight, so get off your high horse and end this shitshow and put this on the agenda for another board meeting. Ellie Householder, do everyone a favor and resign from the board and go up. Name not provided, community member. Stephanie Anello, you are doing a great job, and it is sad that your leadership is undermined by someone who was supposed to support you. As a former board member of a different school board out of area, I would encourage the rest of the board members to not allow your board president to lead you in this manner. She should be removed as president. Do you all understand that you can be sued because of some of the violations she has committed? Dr. Lewis, I do not know you, but I have heard some great things about you from someone. I absolutely love and adore, who still volunteers for time and is very proud of AUSD. But you may want to publicly inform Ms. Householder to not include you nor, nor the board in her dysfunction. You all have the sole responsibility to govern, not dictate. Yes, I now live in Antioch and have been a citizen for three years. Thank you to my friend and parent advocate for always supporting students, families, and she is a huge cheerleader for the staff, administrators, and district employees of the district. But she keeps so many of involved, and I will go forward. Name not provided, community member. How is the board president, how is it that the board president district without getting the whole story? She also never contacted the superintendent for details about the incident prior to once again taking it to social media first. You don't yell fire before you see or smell smoke. She continues to place herself in the middle of situations and judges for her own political gain. She needs to step down. She's not helping Antioch, and she's not an advocate for rather than discussing use of force or notification policies and procedures, the board should be discussing the board president's misuse of social media. If you want to make any real change in the district, it will only start with the board making sure that President Householder does not damage any forward progress by using social media to attack AUSD. Holder take away attention from anything positive, as her efforts are clearly focused on damaging AUSD's reputation, just to make a name for herself. This is the last comment for this item.
Alrighty. So. What is before us is policies. Board notification policies. So, like I said, I do think that there is, you know, this is gonna probably be somewhat similar to the last item in that, you know, and a little bit of digging. And so, yeah. I'm curious, trustee Hernandez.
But again, you know, I think
My hat was up before trustee Hernandez.
I think there's, I was recognizing. And so I think that we have a lot here to discuss about this, to kind of start to begin some of the direction on this. And then we can again continue to discuss this in the future as well. But we have an opportunity here to have this discussion, to have these challenging conversations. I don't think they need to wait.
And I apologize, trustee Rocha.
Okay, at this point, I would do it again. Motion to table the item B for 60 days.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So motion made to table the item for 60 days by trustee Rocha, it was seconded by trustee Hack. Now, are there, is there a discussion on the motion itself? So that's, we can have up to 15 minutes of a discussion, any questions or concerns? You know, she's making the same motion as she did for the last one, so I feel like rationally it does make sense, but I still wanted to give space. Try, sorry, Superintendent Anello.
So I just want to say that a motion to table is not debatable.
But there's, it's not debatable at all, if there's questions or any, you know, concerns about it. And I, like I just said, I just want to get clear about the last one. Okay. So, the motion on the table right now is to, trustee Dr. Lewis.
As I muddy the waters. So. Is the motion to table the entire conversation and put it to the future, and is that presupposing that we have a policy in ed code and everything that exists? Just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the motion.
Uh, trustee Rocha, I think I'm
My motion is to can understand from the superintendent what is available for our policies and procedures that she might have in her hands.
So what exists already? So there's a presupposition that already exists, okay.
Does that answer your question, Dr. Lewis? Trustee Hernandez.
I don't substitute motion for this to be revisited in two weeks.
Okay, okay, so motion was made by, is there a second? Is there a second?
Already there, a second.
But this is a substitute motion, to make it instead of 60 days, two weeks. Be the same, but that number instead of 60 days would be 14 days.
I believe you have to vote on the actual motion on the table, and then if you want
This is an amendment, this is a substitute motion, so the substitute motion, first I need a second, and then we vote on that one, and then, you know, depending on what happens to that substitute motion, a motion as it was initially presented or with the substitution.
But
A substitute motion takes precedence over other motions. That is true.
So is there a second on the substitute motion to change the date from 60 days to 14? I'll second it. So, Ms. Cavalero, can we have a roll call on the substitute motion, which is to change the date from 60?
I would like some clarification prior.
Yeah, I need to understand.
Yeah, trustee Hack.
I would like some clarification by our superintendent, if in fact that's a valid
That's not my understanding. My understanding is you have a motion, you have a second, and it's to table, it's not debatable, and you have to vote on that, but then there can be a substitute motion after that. But
But then, okay. I, how would that make sense though? Because say, like, say that the first motion to table didn't pass, but then the substitute motion, I guess you wouldn't be substituting any
Yeah, so that's why a substitute motion always takes precedence. Yeah.
That's what I would think, and then if the substitute motion passes, by default, the first passes. And then if it doesn't, then we'll vote on the first one. So that that, it just like it cascades down, just in terms of that. But I don't, I mean.
I, 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 I don't know that you're right.
I'm not sure about the answer for this.
I disagree.
I would
On the floor to table. You have to go forward with that. If it fails, then you go
precedence over, because then otherwise, the discussions and to do this. So I think we need to call the vote. We had a second on the substitute motion. We called that vote. If that doesn't pass, then we go back to the original table motion, and we vote to get in front of a, of a vote at all, you'd be always having as quickly as possible, and it still gives us the full control as a board to be able to define how this conversation goes, whereas not having this as a, the motion that, that takes precedence, takes away our control from defining this conversation from the majority. And so that's why this is defined this way. It does take precedence over this.
And I just Googled it, and it does take precedence. So, Ms. Cavalero, please call the vote on the substitute motion. Uh, trustee Hernandez made a substitute motion to change the date. Table and put a 60-day timeline to revisit. The substitute motion is looking at the 14-day timeline, so just making
So point of clarity, would this be another, would this be another special board meeting or something like that? Or would this take place in another, in our actual board meeting?
I mean, I personally would think that we wouldn't pigeonhole ourselves into anything. I think we got to give the superintendent time to, to look at it. I think the 60 days is just, I don't, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think it's like 60 days from, like, today, per se, like exactly 60 days, but more so on the regular board meeting schedule, is what I would think that. I don't, it's me reading in between the lines. Regular agenda.
So that's two board meetings, so not this coming board meeting, but the following board meeting.
It would be 60 days, so that would be not, not, it would be the first meeting in November.
The first regularly scheduled board meeting in November.
Or unless we decided to bring it back sooner than that. Alright, so let's, let's take a roll call vote on the substitute
And just, really quick. So, a couple things, just so I'm clear. One, this table presupposes that there is something that exists, and if it does
That's what I'm understanding.
Is that, is that the understanding of the rest of the board?
I mean, and I think we would maybe provide direction in this case then to the superintendent, that if there isn't anything, that we would be notified in a Friday board and I could and I, when I say you and I, I'm looking at you agenda committee. You know, so it's just like, if, if there isn't anything and we do need to revisit this sooner, I mean, I would just think that the super days is my understanding of this, but
So it's up to 60 days for the superintendent to let us know if something exists.
Yes.
I believe the substitute motion is 14 days, not 60.
Or, or 14 days.
So you're saying 14 days on this substitute motion.
For the superintendent to let us know that something, whether or not something exists.
I'm looking at my colleagues. Is that how you understand it? Is that how you meant it, trustee Hernandez? For it to
I'd like to make sure that, yeah, the next regularly scheduled agenda, I mean, the next regularly scheduled meeting.
But not next week, the one after that, right?
Yes.
So on the, yeah, okay. It's like the 28th, I want to say. So does that, well, let me
Trustee Rocha, yeah.
Yeah, trustee Rocha, please. Trustee Rocha?
I would prefer that the superintendent give me a parliamentary procedure issue on this one. I cannot agree with you, Antonio, or excuse me, trustee Hernandez. So I really disagree with this second amendment.
The substitute motion. You're disagreeing with the order that I'm calling the vote on the substitute
Right. So just so we're
You're incorrect if it ends up being wrong.
So if, I hate to call another, I hate to call another short sort of break. But just because again, I, what I don't want to happen is for us to be out of, out of order or out of compliance, and then that be the narrative, and it sort of distracts away from the intent of the conversation. So could we call, would it be appropriate to call sort of a short meeting for us to get legal counsel around this situation? So that way, we're all on the same page, we all are moving forward, because again, the goal is not to say it's us versus them, it's to be in order and for us to, to move forward collectively. Would that be out of order?
Uh, I mean, I, I personally think that'd be okay, but I am very confident that the substitute motion goes first, because it doesn't make sense for it to go second, because it's a substitute, you know, so it's like, that, it's, it's like the order of things, because if Dr. or sorry, trustee Hernandez's motion passed, then that means that the initial motion to table passes, the only thing that changes is it's a 14-day. Now, if the motion, if the substitute doesn't pass, then what that means, then we're looking at the original motion, which was to table in a 60-day timeline. And so that's the reason why we vote on substitute first, and I'm literally looking at Robert's Rules of Order right now, so that, that way the things are going in the order that makes sense for the chain of events.
There is two versions. One is tabling and one is regular motions, and I think you're not looking at the table part in the Roberts Rules.
I think we just call the vote. I think that's how we handle this.
Alright, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll on this one?
Wait, what are we voting on?
The substitute motion.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is a substitute motion, not a motion to amend the original motion?
It is a substitute motion.
So can you give me the language for the record on what that would be?
Yeah, so the motion was made by trustee Hernandez. A substitute motion to change the day. to change the day from 60 days up to 60 days to 14. And so subsidiary motion or substitute motion is what it's called.
Uh, trustee Hack?
No.
Dr. Lewis?
I'm gonna abstain because I'm, I'm unsure of, of everything. Like, I'm not very clear, so I'm gonna abstain.
President Householder?
Yes.
Trustee Hernan, or trustee Hernandez, I'm sorry, I went out of order there, and trustee Rocha?
No.
I believe that means the motion fails two to two with one abstention?
Yep, and, and then, so now we, we have the original motion on the table, which was to table and have there be an up to a 60-day timeline. Same thing, just from 14 days to 60. So
Up to, it doesn't mean total 60.
Up to is what I heard earlier, but I'm looking and I'm seeing heads nod, so up to 60 days, so they're
So tomorrow, uh, Superintendent Anello could just sort of look at is that
Yeah, or we can have it in November.
We, we cannot have the next board meeting decided, generally established.
Point of order, we, we gotta vote on this ten, on this motion, there, we, we can't debate it. We, we, we went through this, and then we do actually vote on this one next now that the substitute motion failed. This is the next one, and they're really not debating on it.
Thank you, trustee Hernandez. So Ms. Cavallaro, can you please call the roll on, uh, trustee Rocha's motion to table and to have there be up to 60 days to bring back, uh, this item? Or to get us an update?
So just for clarity, the motion is to table, to, to table this item or up to
trustee Rocha, and it was seconded by trustee Hack.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
President Householder?
No.
Uh, Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to table this item for up to 60 days passes three to two with President Householder and trustee Hernandez voting against.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Cavallaro. Next, future meetings, we have one on September 8th and the 22nd. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:55 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by trustee Hernandez. Uh, Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Hack?
Oh yeah.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn the meeting passes 5-0.
Thank you. See you everybody Wednesday.